So 5:00 PM on March 11, 2021, Lakeview Beach Unified School District's regular business school board meeting is virtually reconvening. For those just tuning in, I want to highlight the board has received all written public communications via electronic submission through the LBSD public comment form, which closed today at noon so that we could receive it before this meeting. On the agenda under one, you'll notice the notations throughout the agenda, you'll notice the notations for live public comment. We're going to start with our board, school student board reps, we have to pledge allegiance and Soren, if you can please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
It's hard to coordinate on Zoom. You're doing great. Thank you so much for leading us. That, sorry, let me get back to my spot. In closed session by a vote of five to zero, the board took action to appoint Dr. Chad Maryberry as Assistant Superintendent Instruction Services effective March 11, 2021. And clip. We're very excited. Oh, and there he is. Congratulations. In closed session by a vote five zero, the board took action to issue a notice of release to temporary certificated employees identification number. Bear with me while I read through all these. Seven six zero 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 two five six seven, seven six zero 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 two five nine five, seven six zero 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 two seven seven three, seven six zero 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 two seven six three, seven six zero 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 one two one one, seven six zero 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 three zero one two, seven six zero 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 two nine seven zero, seven six zero 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 two nine three eight, seven six zero 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 two seven four nine, seven six zero 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 two nine eight eight, seven six zero 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 two nine nine zero, seven six zero 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 two nine eight nine, seven six zero 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 two nine eight seven, seven six zero 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 one six three three, and seven six zero 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 two eight seven one. Pursuant to education code four four nine five four subdivision B effective at the end of the 2021 years, 2121 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. That brings us to D, the adoption agenda. Dr. Bor, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have two changes. One, nine F, we left off member Vickers' name on the CSBA legislative week. And on nine K, there are three items on that, and we're going to pull the Kajit item. So it's nine K pulling Kajit, not nine K totally, but just that portion.
Oh, just that portion, okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Then can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended by Dr. Bellaria?
So moved.
Second.
Vickers, okay. Any discussion? Let me see anyone. Okay. Victoria, he please conduct a board member roll call.
Sorry, having trouble on this end. Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
I could say thumbs up if you want.
Yes. Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero. And you have to give me one second because I was trying to. I'm so sorry. Give me one second while I'm trying to redo the screen so I could see everybody's faces and squares. I lost my face. Okay, so this brings us. This brings us to the fact that there are no recognitions this evening. So moves to number six on the agenda, which is public comment on non-agenda items. As Mr. Cullen looks to see if anyone wants to make a public comment, I'll just read what, just once, the procedural comments apply to all live public comment throughout the meeting. If you'd like to make a comment and you're reviewing the meeting via Zoom webinar, raise your hand prior to the board discussion on an item you wish to speak to, and once recognized, unmute your microphone. If you're calling in, press star nine on your phone. If you'd like to make comment during the designated comment period, once recognized to make your comment, press star six to unmute your phone. When you hear your phone is unmuted, please proceed with your comment. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes per topic. Staff will keep time and mute speakers at three minutes. At 20 minutes on a topic, staff will be notified, will notify the board president with consent. The time may be modified to allow for additional public comment. Lastly, more board members are forbidden by law to get into discussion on non-agenda items as all topics that we will discuss must be noticed, so all stakeholders may observe and comment. Mr. Cullen, is there anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items today?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Sherry Morgan, you're able to talk.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I wanted to thank the district for hosting and sponsoring Screenagers. I think it was, and Dr. Keller, I know that it's a conversation that we've had for a long time. I think it's so relevant and the content is it, to some degree, it's a little alarming given the year that we've just had. So I would certainly like to encourage the board and the district and leadership to keep in mind the information that we're bringing forward to the families and then being a part of the solution going forward. So the coming school year is going to be so relevant because it's, it's, it's extremely important to be able to understand how the kids were impacted from this last year, how to go forward, and I know you all know that, but when we present something like Screenagers, I'm encouraging the district to go forward with our students' education with that balance of hands-on and technology in mind. My other comment on non-agenda items would be that I would like to know if you can clarify the opening date, given that we're not technically in the red tier right now, and the news is saying we're not in the red tier until Wednesday, but yet we're slated to open on Wednesday, so if you could clarify how that's going to work. And then as a follow-up to that, if we are asking our teachers to teach in person and we're bringing our kids back on campus, I would like to see the board go to an in-person meeting, whether that's partial, part of the board is in the boardroom and the other part is calling in on Zoom. But I think it's really important for our district leadership to represent what we are asking of our students and of our teachers from how we treat each other, how we speak to each other, how we hold firm to bylaws, how we bring them in for in-person learning. I think the board should reflect the very model that we're trying to implement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know the Dr. Bor sent out a communication about returning to school today, so. Is there any more public speakers?
This time, there are no more hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. And that moves us to number seven, board reports, or reports, sorry, to the board. And A is student board representative. The student board representatives are Soren, people, Joanna LeGault, and a special report from Tessa. If I mess up your name, I'm so sorry. Smile a lot, low, low it's. Thought to tell me if that was even close, at Thurston Middle School. They'll report on the LBSD student body to the board. Soren, the floor is yours if you want to start.
Thank you. Yesterday, we were very excited to have Tess here from us with, from the middle of middle school with us to share her experience over there. And so first off, I had a meeting with some student clubs and organizations. This month is financial literacy month at the high school, and so we're collaborating with ASB, Mall United Nations, and other clubs to set up activities virtually, of course, that students can join and participate in. We also met with a few clubs over recently, such as the Embrace Club, which has a really great message, especially during this time. They're seeking to spread awareness about kind of just embracing everyone, you know, bring people together. And within their club, there, it's a great outlet for the stress of COVID, and they create a very safe place to talk about serious issues. They've had, they've had discussions about, about, about Women's History Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and then also some deeper discussions. They're, they're seeing to make, make sure that everyone knows there's a place for them. They do cool social media stuff like Motivational Monday and Through This Friday, which is exciting. And we're also with the She Woke Club, which runs a podcast where they talk about, where they talk about issues such as COVID's effects on education and minorities. And they also create a safe place for students. We also make sense of met with, for the second time, with the superintendent student advisory council. We're, we're going over some important data points, had some interesting discussions about, you know, about looking, about looking at data, also what the data really means and how we as students kind of interact with that and how we determine that data in many ways. And looking forward to some more exciting stuff with that. And then now I'm handing off to Tess from the middle, from Thurston ASB. She's the Thurston ASB president. I believe it's a smilex. Maybe she incorrect both of us.
Thank you.
Yes. Hi, thank you so much for having me. It is smilex. So I'm going to talk about a little bit what ASB has been looking like at the middle school. So basically, in the middle, I mean, in the beginning of the year, we were more focusing on trying to think of fun events that would keep kids intrigued and more motivated in school, like having like holiday days and crazy hair days just to keep kids more motivated and thinking that school is going to be fun and keeping it fun online. And then more recently, we worked with Mr. Chris, who is our multimedia director at the school to create a campus video. So we, the ASB, we met obviously safely, safely at Thurston, and we filmed a video for what it was going to look like, and that I believe is posted on the page and on the YouTube channel. So people can go and see and look and get a peek into what school is going to look like back on campus this year at Thurston. And then in the last couple of weeks, we've been working a lot with No Place for Hate. So we've been working on anti-bullying campaigns and things like that. And recently, we also started and created these Cy-Ruling PSA, so PSA is about anti-bullying and ways that we can stop bullying, and those will be open for students to watch. So thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Joanna.
Thank you again, Tess, for coming. That was really nice. So I'm going to do again some school updates. It's obviously been a big week for the schools, especially the secondary schools. But at TOW, they've been holding their spring conferences with parents. They've also, both El Moro and TOW have been working, the staff has been meeting to develop common formative assessments for English and helping to create more help for kids with English and math. And they also are welcoming 27, TOW is welcoming 27 new students from Virtual Academy to their on-campus on this Monday, so that's really exciting for them. At El Moro, they had their Jogathon last week, and so that was really fun that they got to do that in person this year. And there's also a fifth grade art contest going on so that the design will be, oh, sorry. Yeah, it's a yard signed for promotion. And they also are doing the common formative assessments as well. And at Thurston, they are wrapping up their phase two orientations to review all the aspects of a safe welcome back as well. And also the LBHS will be coming back on March 17, on Wednesday. I also, me and another student, Serena Hoso, we are involved in the virtual equity steering committee. We have met two times over Zoom so far, and that has been a really great experience. We have been having really great progressive conversations, and we hope to really help our community and school. We are still getting our footing down, but we are figuring out really great way how to survey the students and parents. We're also hoping to combine that with our superintendent student advisory committee as you get a better survey of students and how we can help. Also, my last comment, I would just like to say about the theater. I have had a couple of comments come to me about how they feel that the performing arts should be able to go back in person to do activities as sports has been able to. And I totally understand the concern. I know due to the state restrictions, it has not been possible. But I just wanted to say, from a student perspective, we hear you, and hopefully when we return, we will be able to do more things in person. And I know we have been doing a lot with the teachers and helping them, so things will improve. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you all three of you for your great reports, and, and I agree, Joanna, it'll get better and there'll be more opportunities for all the performing arts. And this brings us to B, seven B on the agenda, which is the bargaining unit representative for CSEA and Labuca. We'll start with our CSEA president. Quarter, I'm looking for you on my screen. There you are. The floor is yours.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, board members and administration. First of all, congratulations or just welcome to the new position, Dr. Mayberry, and we look forward to working with you in your position as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Also, chapter 131 welcomes, first of all, the ability that we will be going back to school in person and that our certificated and classified staff will be back on campuses. We do know that there's virtual still existing, but many people have called me or texted me and are saying they're ready. So with that said, that ready, set, go thing that we started a while ago, we're ready, and that's just totally, you know, a positive situation. We have also started to schedule our negotiations for next few months, and as you'll see, the sunshine letter is in your board packet. And we have already started the reclassification meetings with Mr. Conlin and various people from administration and from the classified side as we move forward in reviewing job descriptions as we do every year. And it's a very transparent process so that we know that our job positions are really as accurate to what the staff member is doing. And I'd also like to just say sincerely that CSEA and our chapter really appreciate the open communication that happens between Dr. Bellaria and the cabinet, the school site administrators during this, let's just say, ever-changing, ongoing process of this last year, which we are looking on one year as of March 13. And we've all grown. We've all been overwhelmed from time to time, and we've had to expand our processes of how we think out of the box or the paradigm shift or whichever language people are using at this particular moment. But again, we are grateful and thankful. That's my report.
Thank you for that. That was a wonderful report. And President Hopper for Labuca, the floor is yours. And you're muted.
Okay. Even though school started back in August, it kind of feels like school is getting started again as the secondary teachers are preparing their classrooms and are looking forward to being back in their classrooms on campus, seeing our colleagues, seeing our students, and working with our students and instructing our students in person. And we're encouraged that so many teachers are in the midst of receiving vaccinations. And through the help of Mr. Conlin, Dr. Valoria, you guys have been so key in setting up those appointments and education pod or vaccination pods for us to be able to do that. So that's been awesome. And our members, we have been surveyed, we've submitted our sunshine document, and we're working on our dates for negotiation. So I can't agree more with what Joanna said and you, Carol, that things are looking up and it will be exciting to be on campus and see everybody in person. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. This moves us to seven C, which is board member reports. And for new listeners, and to need the law that governs us as a board members restricts us from communicating with each other outside of, with all of each other, outside of when we're seated as a board, further restricts us from making only brief announcements and brief reports on our member activity. And so, and brief is kind of the same amount of time that we provide the public to speak. So as a board, we also define through our protocols and norms that we're going to report on the committees that we sit on because we can't all sit on them. Otherwise, that would be in violation of law as well. So we choose members and then also professional development that we participated in. Sometimes we have a little more to talk about in our board report, and sometimes we don't have one. So, member Vickers, the floor is yours to provide your report.
Okay, thank you. I would say I sat in on the high school PTA meeting and they had a very long and comprehensive presentation from Lynn Gregory and Angela Ship on all that they're doing in college and career and in scholarship. They provided a lot of information and they have provided a lot of opportunities for students to make it as supportive in, as it would be in a normal school year. They welcomed Lynn back because she had been gone for a couple of years. The, there were several things, I know some of the others of you attended things all on a Wednesday afternoon. And I sat in for a while in the performing arts presentation that we were invited to. I saw a few performances from students, a few vocals, and then I needed to leave as I wanted to attend the OC Department of Education Brown Act presentation, which was really interesting. Since it's sort of an ever-changing situation with that also, particularly influenced by social media. And one of the things I found most interesting, and I know we had a recent session of our own on that, was that using social media, something like Facebook, and there's an idea presented that technically, if more than the board, more than one board member goes on and even likes that, that is a potential violation of the Brown Act because it's communicated, if that, if what you put your like to was something to do with district jurisdiction or district business. And that was sort of taking it one step further, and I think sort of the underlying advice was just, if you stay away from social media, you'll be, it'll be a lot safer for you to not worry about getting in a violation situation. I just wanted to comment that I, I am on that, the steering committee, the equity steering committee, and I think the meetings have been very informative. I'm, I think the consultant group that we have are doing a really good job. They really are open to people, listening to people and receiving a lot of input. And then one of their purposes is to, you know, broaden our thinking, open our minds and be receptive. And I think it's just, it's, it's going to be very, very productive for our district. The last I will comment on is that with, along with member Perry, we had a CCA board meeting that was, had a lot of information from the executive director. She is reorganizing her administrative team and made some, some appointments to that team. And they are working on a WAS study. They're working with the site principals at the schools that they serve to talk about next year's planning, the courses that the principals see as the best to offer on those campuses. It's a very busy time for them, and they're also working legislatively to get some more commitment to ongoing funding. So right now, they are significantly supported by grants, and they would like to have a stronger place in the state budget as a recognition of the importance of college and career advantage. It's, there was some talk from this executive director of how much this has changed. So many courses are offered and so many courses have A through G approval from the university. And the dual enrollment, the articulation, I mean, it's really an opportunity for students to enhance their education. I'm sure member Perry will have more to report on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report, member Vickers. Member Perry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. I'm so impressed with how many things CCA has to offer. I attended the endowment meeting, and financially, all is good. They do a fabulous job of managing the money there. The school power has a new webpage, and they are in the process of putting the student directory online. They've given out about $50,000 in teacher grants, and it's ongoing. They said they get about three or four a week, so that's exciting. And with Jan, the CCA meeting was very informative, and I'm so impressed with all the classes being given. I also had an opportunity to go to San Clemente to present the CCA Teacher of the Year. Flags and balloons and it's a robotics teacher who also teaches college chemistry. He's a very busy guy. And we were able to take pizza and cake and everything to his class, which they enjoyed because they are in class now. And I attended the grand opening for the College and Career Center at Dana Hills, and that was amazing. Their student, their students were there and talking about all the things they were doing, and that was exciting. And then I was able to Zoom for a couple of days in some classrooms to see presentations about national landmarks and was just fun to see students again and impressive to see how well-prepared they were. And then the elementary school still celebrated Read Across America. So I read on Zoom. I didn't do a very good job, though. I couldn't figure out how to get the pictures to show without a big, you know, too much glare, so I'd need to work on that. And lastly, I've been invited to meet with Dr. Barbara Ferrer, the Director of LA Public Health on COVID and going back to school and women and COVID. So if you have any questions you'd like me to ask, just let me know. Thanks.
When will that meeting be?
It will be a neck, not this Saturday, but next Saturday.
Thank you. Organization that's putting that on? I'm just curious.
It's a group that I belong to in the South Bay in LA.
Oh, okay.
If you're comfortable, member Perry, can you just, can you send the invite information to Victoria so that I could just share it with the board? You know. Or is it not that kind of thing?
Yeah, I don't know if you're not a member, if you can come, but I can send.
Okay. Then we just understand when you're, when you're giving us update, we just have more knowledge, background knowledge, right?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so we can have a better listening. Thank you for that report. Great. Member Kelly, the floor is yours.
Following D and Jan, I reviewed all of the CCA materials and exceptionally impressed with what's going on there. I've also reviewed the candidates for the CSBA delegate assembly. And if you're around midnight when we get to teen, you'll see who I recommended. I've also reviewed, started reviewing the wonderful students who, who have applied for the LBGTQ scholarship. And we'll have some recommendations to school power soon on that. I've also reviewed today videos that were done on the reopening, and I have nothing but impressed. I thought that Tess did an exceptional job with, with her presentation and and all the students. I was talking to the superintendent later. I emailed him that all the, all the, all the people in leadership were women except for one man, so I'm, I'm just really impressed with, with where we're going as far as at Thurston. And I have nothing to do but to thank the site administrators, the teachers, the staff for the excellent reopening plans that you, it could not have been clearer and fun as far as what they presented. My only concern was that I've got confused because the new principal at Thurston is talking about our this video was, was originally giving when we went into the purple zone. And it was delayed on our St. Patrick's Day. But it was, if you haven't, if you haven't looked at these videos, they are just so well-done and so, so clear. And the students in particular did just an outstanding job in getting us ready to go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, member Kelly, for the report. Member Osborne, the floor is yours.
Thanks, President Norman, and just a brief report because it is a long night.
Night. Uh since the last regular meeting, I um attended the PTA Council meeting on March 4th and gave a report of um board activities. I also sat in on the TOW PTA meeting. Um I held a site visit um at the high school hosted by Dr. Allman. That was really exciting. You see all the preparations that were uh in place. And whether that be cameras, entry points, um all, all of that wonderful stuff. I attended both the Screenagers uh viewings that were held on the 24th of February and again on March 3rd. And I also wanted to echo the kudos on the Thurston Middle School reopening video. It was very well-done. I wish that uh, you know, the the excitement could be felt by everybody that hasn't watched that video yet, what it will be like for those students um along with the high school students to return to school. So so kudos on that and to Dr. Kelly. I think ASB could use a couple more middle school boys on that leadership committee, but uh it was, it was a very, very well-done. And I think, you know, there's really a a new feeling that's emerged just in the last two and a half weeks. Since we've definitely since we've met as a regular board, that is palpable, that's out there. It's uh it's it's really a uh just a wonderful spot to be here tonight and to know that the secondary the students that wanted to return in person are doing so. So thank you to everybody, everybody out there that made that happen.
Thank you so much. And then um my report first, I want to apologize. I owe people many replies. My entire computer system uh had to be wiped and rebooted and because of the pandemic, it had to be done by me virtually uh with the support of tech. So um member Perry, I still owe you a response to your last email and I'm committed. All committed uh on ongoing communication to gather the information needed to proceed forward. Um and update on the equity work. I know that's already been spoken to and I'm not sure if I could beat Johanna's comments on there and Jan's. But the steering committee has met twice. We'll meet again next week. It is a small group that uh is representative of the stakeholders at large. We did hire Ed Elements in response to our resolution, the commitment to this work. They'll facilitate our study session on March 25th and it is the sole focus of the meeting. So I encourage everyone to attend the session. Hear about the work uh from the steering committee and provide feedback. And the steering committee is just one of the many committees that will be needed to accomplish LBSG's work on this topic. There's plenty of time and ways to get involved in this multi-year process. So you have not been left out. We do want, we want to hear from everybody. I was also able to watch uh Screenagers as well and it was encouraging uh and encouraged by that knowledge being presented to parents and uh what they could do for their support around their children's technology. As we move to secondary um uh secondary students on campus, I want to thank everyone for all the work they put in um getting those students back uh for those who want the option to start next week. And it's vital that the resources uh remain focused on that transition. To be proactive, I wanted to mention that our, that for now, the board will remain virtual as we focus on the sites as well as to hear with the proper social distancing. That we couldn't have the meeting in a regular room with the right technology available uh that allows us to comply with the laws. And we did make the decision, never imagining a pandemic uh when we, when we purchase the technology purchased in that space. Um but the technology in a way we're staying connected is vital. So for the moment, uh we'll stay uh virtual and then we'll progress as, you know, as we can evaluate um a transition back for ourselves. I did attend an all-day workshop uh for board presidents through CSBA and I gained uh valuable insight that hopefully will be translated into the running of the meetings, hopefully in the last workshop. Um you saw part of that. Um but allowing us to operate as a team under our norms with our focus and energy on the best outcomes for all of our students and all of our stakeholders that were aligned to the public good in a way that allows us uh allows for unity while maintaining independence. The public knows that all perspectives have been considered. Um we achieve this through dynamic dialogue and deliberation that considers relevant facts from multiple points of view, enlarges our perspectives and opinions and understandings. Um in that conversation uh that we, before we take any kind of action. Um anyways, and then also in that, that we are compliant with the Brown Act and the laws, the governance that we celebrate achievements, we identify improvements, and we speak to the accountability of our employee and his team's work. Providing clear direction that aligns with our goals. And when we take actions, the majority vote sets the direction. And so um some of the things I learned, I'm gonna start, I have implemented and I'll continue to implement, but there's one. I'm gonna work with Victoria Weber to reorganize the agenda. And if it works better for us, great. And if it doesn't, I'm not offended by anything. We always change things back. Um, you know, we're gonna look at the calendar, the governance calendar and things like that. So there's some stuff that we'll work on. And then that, those things will be brought forward and obviously feedback, like if it's not working, you just tell me. Um but it's hopefully better line so that we can govern better as a team. And then one of the most amazing quotes of that long day event was uh by Lillian Katz and it's Katz. And it's each of us must come to care about everyone else's children. We must recognize that the welfare of our children and grandchildren is ultimately linked to the welfare of all other people's children. After all, when one of our children needs life-saving surgery, someone else's child will perform it. If one of our children is threatened or harmed by violence, someone else's child will be responsible for that violent act. The good life for our own children can be secured only if the good life is also secure for all other people's children. And I truly felt that is why we're all here as board members and that we want that good life for our kids and for all other children. Like we're aware of that, right? And that statement. So um and then I, but to be brief, I have a couple more things to them. One is I did attend also the OC Brown Act and it was supportive of our governance and the social media, I mean is make it very clear that this is when we're supposed to share information um with each other. And so um also I had a meeting with the OC Board President, I don't know, oh yeah, with Orange County School District's Board Presidents with Senator Men. It was very brief, but it was the first step in that legislative work. And then um lastly, I know because of pandemic, things are blurred when we're doing our professional development, even if it's free. If you, if we can let Victoria know so she can process it accordingly. Because through the board president training, I realized that just beyond the complacency and the cost parts that are our responsibilities, it also is a way we bond, like so and sharing those opportunities like what member Perry was talking about, we're kind of excited, like helps us when you're bringing back the information just to understand what it is or if it's something we can also attend, that we could do that. Um so I, I forgot, I was thinking only if there's a cost associated. So just let's make sure we let Victoria know of all those opportunities. And this takes us to number seventy, uh superintendent report. Doctor Flory, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it brief. I know that there's a lot on the agenda. Um uh again, you know, we're on track for the reopening on March 17th. Uh tier status rep is updated on Tuesdays and I confirmed multiple times with uh Orange County Healthcare to see CDPH that we are on track. Um obviously, um the, the only way we wouldn't be able to is if we were told you're not allowed to. Um but at this point in time, um we're headed down that that track and I appreciate again uh all the work that's been happening at our school sites uh in terms of pushing out all the information for students and staff. And we look forward to welcoming our secondary students back on the campus on the 17th and the 18th of next week. Um while we're focused on getting students to return to the classroom, we are also focused on our students uh getting our sports up and running. We have continued to receive ongoing changes. Um just once again, today I received a, an email prior to this meeting uh that had uh some updates in it from Orange County Healthcare to see regarding sports, testing cadences, um quarantine requirements. Uh there, the language is, is starting to get a little stronger. Um and uh we'll, I'll be interested, I haven't had a chance to totally review all of it. Um though uh recognize that there were some issues with testing cadence. I emailed them uh right back and said it wasn't in compliance with CDPH. They emailed back and apologized and sent another revision uh about a half hour later. So uh they're working through it too. It's just a lot of stuff uh that that keeps coming down. So indoor sports will be eligible to start uh along with the requirement to test indoor sports. Uh right now, football, water polo aren't required to be tested moving forward because of case rates dropping below seven. Uh however, um uh we will be offering testing uh for those sports and we'll continue to do that. We believe that's a great, uh something, it's important to have. Um and again, not to be left out, our visual forming our students, again, recognizing that uh that our VAPA groups have been deeply impacted and and not necessarily able to um uh to perform together. Um so uh my direction to staff, uh the middle school and high school is to uh work with our um staff in those areas to find ways to bring our students back onto campus uh so that they can play together, dance together um and perform together. So uh look for uh more of that um in the future as we continue to kind of expand. Um again, just recognizing too, as we get up and running with the, our schools uh in session and for in-person, that you know, it's gonna take a little time as we get everything going to recognize as places where we can change, where we can evolve. Um so just as um, you know, give us a little couple of weeks as we get everything um settled. And just like the elementaries did, we'll make adjustments, we'll tweak things. Um and you know, we look to to um allow students to opportunities to, you know, socialize, et cetera, safely. But the beginning, it may be a little stricter as we just try to get all of our ducks in a row as we get going and learn from uh the process. Um I won't talk too much about student advisory meeting and um and the committee. I'm just grateful for our two student reps to be part of that. Um I uh look forward to having future conversations. It's, it's really fun to hear their perspectives um and talk through um you know, everybody on that group is, is willing to speak, which is fantastic. And so um the, the hour went by very fast yesterday. Uh so I think the next one's an hour and a half. Um so we're uh, I'm looking forward to that. Uh and lastly, um there's been a lot of um a lot of new money and and bills passed more recently, um the passage here in California of SB eighty-six. Where that includes some funding for extended learning. Uh we're been attending some information sessions and FAQs, trying to understand the implications of the funding. Uh we do know that it will require a plan be approved by the board uh prior to June 1st. Uh yet the template um is not yet out and we expect to know what's in the, what the requirement of the plan is in about thirty weeks. So um again, that's not gonna slow down our planning for summer and the work that we believe we needed to to do. Uh we will get the ball rolling in those areas and uh look to determine uh how we might continue to evolve that uh moving forward. And then the last one that just uh was recently passed and um must know is the passage of the 1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan. Um there is funding for schools. Again, not sure what exactly it all entails and how it might come to California um and in what way it will be distributed. Um there's a lot of uh unknowns with, with that bill at this point in time or law, I should say now at this point. Um so again, more to come on that. And as we receive information, I'll be sure to share with the board.
Thank you so much.
And not to, yeah, and and not to leave out. Um I am so excited to have Dr. Mayberry join on our team. And uh he won't have a, a report tonight. He has plenty of things in instructional services that he'll be speaking to. Uh but uh at a future meeting, he'll be, uh we'll have a report from him as well, so.
Thank you for that. And I plan to congratulate him when we're welcoming his report. So congratulations, Dr. Mayberry, from all of us. Very excited to have you uh in this position. And uh this leads us to I E on the agenda and it's um Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normandin. Um I'll be brief, but it's been we're just a couple of days away from one year when the pandemic shut our schools down and uh one particular highlight I just want to point out is our nutrition services staff. They didn't stop. They kept providing meals to all those students needed in our district and uh couldn't be more grateful and proud of the work they've done. And they continue to uh adapt to the changes we need, whether it's delivering class or the, the meals to the classrooms individually and still providing grab and go lunches. They're, they're still doing it. So um I just want to say thank you to them publicly because um I haven't enough. I have behind, you know, outside of board meetings, but I think it's important to put it on the record. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much uh for pointing that out and please share with them from the board that we are so appreciative of all that work you're doing behind the scenes. And and for the students, make sure everybody gets food. Uh Mr. Colin, uh the floor is yours for your report.
Thank you, President Normandin. Yeah, I wanted to echo the congratula- congratulations, Dr. Mayberry joining us as the Assistant Super instructional Services. Um as you know, previously, we, we had um you had approved the P, the PIO position. So we're going through the interview process. We have our final rounds in interviews tomorrow. So we're excited to kind of wrap that piece up. And then we're, we're busy collaborating with TMS and LBHS for the, you know, final uh staffing needs for, for their return to in-person. And then just one uh mention, like I said, we've been, we've been working very hard with the county to offer vaccinations to uh to all staff that that are interested. Um we, we just sent out a survey. Um yesterday, we've, we've had 211 staff members respond to the survey. You know, we have 300 plus staff, but of that, 131 had shared that they've already received their first shot and another 30 plus were, had appointments. So we're excited to get close to about at least half staff or are there. And then there was a number of staff that shared about 30 that were having difficulty getting appointments. And I've reached out to the county. They're gonna try to help us um procure appointments for them as well. But they are, you know, unfortunately, there is a we just got where there is a, a vaccination shortage that we've, that uh coming in. Um so, you know, we'll, we'll continue to work through that. But our goal is to continue to get, for those that want to get vaccinated, continue to provide opportunities for them and share all the different ways that they can do that. And that's everything for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um there definitely is a change in there because those were all such upbeat reports. As clerk, as Warren said, so uh the final report tonight is a special treat and it's our principal from TLW, Julie Hatchet. Hatchell, Hatchell. And um Hatchell, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Um good evening, members of the board and cabinet. I am so pleased to be able to present to you tonight regarding what's going on at top of the world. It's been almost a year since I've been named the principal and it has been an extraordinary year. I've served in public education for over thirty-one years and I think about twenty-three of those have been administrative. And this has definitely been the most challenging and unique. But in all honesty, I could say there's no other place I'd want to be if I had to go through COVID again. This district has been uh very creative, supportive. There's been collaboration amongst all of our stakeholders and we've gotten through it together and I've appreciated that. I'm looking forward to a little bit more of a normal experience. However, I think there's a lot that we've learned this year and a lot of great things. And I'm looking forward to sharing those with you this evening. Next. I know that Mr. Duddy presented at his uh, when he was talking about Almoro, kind of about the logistics of what were going on and the logistics at top of the world are very similar. So I won't be touching upon those tonight, but more of the unique things that we have at our school site. And I wanted to share a little bit about our enrollment. As you know, we're running two programs this year, both the virtual academy and the hybrid. And this gives you a little bit of an idea of the fluidity of our programs this year. And while that's presented a little bit of a challenge for us, I think our staff has done an extraordinary job in really accommodating the needs of our students and our parents throughout the situation. So at any time that our parents or students have not felt comfortable coming on campus, they've had that accommodation of being able to be a participant in that virtual academy. And if we look at the numbers, you can see last year, we ended the year with five hundred and eighty-five students in our program. This year, we started the year when we committed, were asked the families to commit to either virtual academy or hybrid with four hundred and fifty students that committed to hybrid and sixty-six that committed to virtual academy. But as you could see, once we actually decided to come onto campus in early October, we had a big shift where several of our families decided they weren't ready. And we had a hundred and seventeen that ended up going into virtual academy and three hundred and ninety-nine that began with us. Throughout the year, we, we did have a dip around the winter holidays. Uh that was when we had, we saw surges in the COVID cases. And again, we, we had our low as far as the number of kids on campus. We hit three hundred and ninety-six. But I'm excited to say that when we begin the third trimester on Monday, we're welcoming back approximately thirty, thirty students to the hybrid program. So we'll be at four hundred and thirty-three on campus and ninety-three in our virtual academy. Next. One of our focus areas this year has been our multi-tiered system of support for students. And one of the reasons this was so important for us is because of um how And one of the reasons this was so important for us is because of, um, how quickly we had to transition to our virtual learning last year and the anticipation that we may have some students coming in with, uh, several gaps. At the beginning of the year, we have seen several new students come into top of the world this year from other places that we've accommodated and we wanted to quickly target their needs so that we were able to close those academic gaps. And if you're looking at this, just to show you what, what this is, the green area is our tier one area. That's really where we want all of our students to be, where that primary support meets the academic needs of all of our students. So that is the green area. The yellow area is what we call our tier two, and that's where students may need a little bit of assistance in some small groups within the classroom. And then our tier three is our red area, and those are our students that may need a little bit more intensive support where we do some pullout, pullout programs and support systems with those kids. Again, targets don't targeted on their special needs as we have assessed them and identified those. So as you can see, our benchmark one, which was given in mid to mid September to early October, that shows you the number of students in each of those tier areas. And then benchmark two was given in late January and we've had quite a bit of growth for our students. So I'm proud to say that our, our, our teachers, again, they're working very hard. I'm so grateful for our classified staff who's also gone to training and specialized, uh, program support to be able to meet the needs of these kids too. We did analyze a couple of areas where we may not have seen, um, at as much growth, that third grade area, you'll, you'll see we went from eighty-two to seventy-nine percent, a little bit of a dip. But when we looked at that, those were a lot of new kids coming in throughout that benchmark one and benchmark two. Assessment. So we're, we're again focusing on that. And this will be an area where we, I call it a probability where we had, um, a problem that we addressed at the beginning of the year and an opportunity to analyze systems and maybe do something different because of COVID. And we will be really redesigning that MTSS for next year with a strong focus, not only on ELA but math. Now, again, our, I'm proud of our staff and their openness and responsiveness to, to helping our kids. They're doing a great job. Next. One of the unique areas that we were able to focus on this year was our encore enrichment. And I know Mr. Duddy talked about how that was rolled out with the two days a week with our students. In addition to that, we are, we rolled out some enrichment opportunities on Friday. And not only are our students getting the encore subjects of the Spanish and the music and all of the wonderful things, science that we provide in Laguna. We added career education to them in a unique way this year. And in working with Kelly Shear, who worked, who reached out to us at the beginning of the year, we asked our kids and our teachers about the curriculum areas that they were studying as well as their interests. And Kelly helped to recruit members of our community to provide assemblies once a month on Fridays during their asynchronous work, which became a little bit more interactive. Uh, and that has been a, a great success for us. It's voluntary for our kids to sign in. However, you can see that as we launched this in December, we focused on city government and we had three hundred and five students that attended that assembly, uh, across both of our virtual academies as well as our hybrid learning programs. In January, we did, did a assembly with engineering and design and had three hundred and twenty-eight students. And our last one in February was focused on healthcare and we had two hu- two hundred and twenty students. One of our other challenges that we had this year was how we would service our gate students, our gifted and talented students. Normally in a school year, they are offered some extra opportunities after the school day. And obviously we are not out able to have them on campus. So we did a little bit of a shift and we offered them the opportunity to have some special learning environments within the, um, the assembly career education realm as well. So you can see that we've offered two so far focusing on entrepreneurship as well as legal systems. Next. One of the, uh, the other areas that I've been really excited about this year has been in with introducing the program Thrively with our students. And as a new principal, not really having a background knowledge on some of our kids, I haven't been able to even meet them on campus, some of them yet. This program gave me a great opportunity to understand what the strengths are of our students as well as their interests. So we rolled this out last year with our fifth grade students. And then we've expanded it this year with our third and fourth grade students. And they take an assessment, it's eighty questions and they, it, this was in their encore rooms. And it gives us an idea of really what makes them tick. How do they learn? How can we motivate them as students? And tap into those things to encourage them to engage in learning. What we're doing with that from that assessment is building some play decks, uh, playlists where the teachers pick curriculum that can match the trends and themes of our kids. And then those are matched to the kids in their encore rooms. So that we can further tap into, uh, their interest in learning as well. So that's been one of the things, thank you, Mike Morrison, for pushing us to do that. I appreciate the innovation with that. And that's been exciting for us to, to see the kids get involved in. Uh, if we're just at the beginning stages, but expecting that to grow, uh, as we continue throughout the year and next year as well. Next. One of the things that was really important to all of our parents and our staff, as well as our students this year was to find a way to connect our kids to top of the world. And it was challenging to do because again, we're, we're, we're working with two different programs, both the hybrid and the virtual academy. But we've done a great job, I would say, in helping the kids to smile through their masks. I'd say if you look at their eyes, you can tell they're still having a lot of fun and we're being creative. I like to say that we're doing some of our traditional activities with a COVID twist. So here you can see that our student council has organized our traditional Halloween dress up. I had to include the darling picture of one of our students dressed up as Dr. Hatchell with the, uh, red name tag there. That just, that, that was awesome. Uh, we also have creative staff members that are doing everything they can to dress up and participate. This is Manny. He was actually one of our resident substitutes that's moved on to the high school to do a student teaching there. We've done our hundred day celebration of school led by our kindergarten team and they still did a parade throughout the campus. Another amazing connection we have is with our school resource officers. And our, our new officer, Ashley Croteen, it comes monthly to our campus and our student council and stars of the month get out there and they decorate her car. It was really cool because she went to my old district, my former district Irvine to get her shot. And she said that she was parading around there with this, uh, themed car last month. And they were all a little bit jealous that we got so much attention with our SROs in Laguna and, and, uh, they, their, their cars were very clean and, 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 uh, uh, undecorated. So that the kids look forward to that. They're doing it again next Wednesday for St. Patrick's Day. And not only do they have that fun interaction with the kids, uh, with student council, but they're going into the classrooms as well to help us with internet safety and how to be responsible with a digital citizenship. So that partnership and connection is working very well. And then finally you'll see here our movie night, our drive-in movie night. And this was something brand new as we were trying to think of how we could bring our families together. Our PTA decided that we would try this and it was quite successful. We sold out. It was a free event, but we, uh, reached capacity at our very first showing and the families all had a, a great time. Even though we weren't able to be, be together physically necessarily, we were there in our cars and having fun and, and creating that, that camaraderie. Next. Finally, I wanted to end my presentation tonight just with a new principal's perceptions uh, coming into the district. I think oftentimes we can maybe forget how, how special we are. And it's nice to come in a little bit objectively to appreciate all of the wonderful things that I've been able to see and experience. I wanted to make sure that I intentionally pointed those out to you tonight. One of the things that stands out so much to me in Laguna is that we are a relationship oriented district. And in all things that our cabinet and our, our teachers do, they really focus on preserving those relationships and making those personal connections. And I've appreciated that. We have an extraordinarily collaborative leadership team. I have to say that I, my principal colleagues, right before I presented tonight, I got texts from every single one of them just saying, go for it, good job. And that team spirit that we have in working together, problem solving together. We meet weekly with the superintendent. I've never had that before. Um, I have frequent visits from our cabinet members on campus. And I think that makes a small district, uh, so, so focused on our mission of how we serve kids and how we work together as a team. We have a positive working relationships with our union and association. I am fortunate to get to work with both Margaret and Sarah on my campus and I appreciate their positivity. If we ever have a, a challenge to work through, I feel very comfortably that we approach that together to problem solve and that benefits our kids. We have an extremely supportive parent community, PTA and school power, Sarah Durand. Again, one of our fabulous top of the world parents, the amount of grants that we've been able to secure and the support this year has been extraordinary. And our teachers and staff appreciate that so much. We have high quality instructional programs that are taught by talented employees and not only are certificated, but are classified this year. They are very connected to what we do and very connected to supporting our vision. And especially during a challenging year, I've seen them go above and beyond. And that commitment is something that has just really touched my heart this year. Um, stellar special education staff, I told my team frequently, you guys are absolutely amazing. Irene's leadership, um, the teamwork that our, our staff has in really working with parents to service our kids and the growth that our kids experience in our special ed, special ed programs has been extraordinary. Um, we have exceptional encore offerings. I've talked about a few of those this year and, or tonight. And then finally, amazing students. Um, just a little story, I, I fractured my leg this year and was on crutches for several weeks. And the kids were carrying my bag from one place to another, really concerned that I was going to be able to heal. And, uh, at just really invested in, in me as a person. And again, that touched me that we had kids that cared so deeply for not only me, but each other in our team. So Laguna is a wonderful place. Thank you for entrusting me to be here. I'm excited to be here for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you for that amazing, um, report. And did I, are you Dr. Hatchell? Did I get that wrong?
I'm, I'm Dr. Hatchell. Yes. That's okay. No, no worries.
I apologize though. Yeah, I was gonna ask if there's any questions.
No questions. Appreciate such an informative and enthusiastic report. I was thinking when you were hired, um, how difficult it is to come in as a new principal when you can't meet your staff, you can't meet your students. And as you described it, a challenging year, but I would say you obviously met the challenges and have done, uh, really, uh, well by your staff and your student. And I thank you.
Anyone else with comments, questions? Sorry, it's hard to see on this. I'm looking. I think tonight you guys are gonna have to speak up because I can't see everyone on the same screen. Uh, thank you so much. It was such an upbeat, um, presentation. I really enjoyed, uh, how the prayer element worked in there. And I love the fact that then, you know, you could tie it in different ways and allow all the kids to get together and be more interactive on Fridays and on something, you know, a different topic. So, and, uh, I'll probably slaughter the word Thrively, but I'm so glad that you followed Mike Morrison on suggestion on that because it sounds like that worked out wonderfully. So we appreciate you being here. We know how hard it has been, um, uh, to start as a new principal and we're so glad that you accepted the job a year ago and that you've been with us. So thank you so much. The round of applause there. Um, okay, so that is the end of reports. And so this brings us to, um, public hearings. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the union contracts. So public hearing on item eight A is open at seven eleven PM. The public is invited to comment on Laguna Beach Unified's Sophomore Association and Laguna Beach Unified's School District Joint Proposal for the reopeners to the twenty, 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 twenty-three collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak to this agreement this evening?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, that since there are no speakers, then the public hearing on item A, eight A is closed and that brings us to eight B. The public he- hearing of item eight B is open at seven eleven PM. The public's invited to comment on the Classified School Employees Association, chapter one thirty-one, and Laguna Beach Unified School District's Joint Proposal for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item tonight?
There is no one at this time.
Okay, well then that closes, um, eight B and moves us to number nine, which is the consent calendar. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the consent calendar items tonight?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you for that. Since there are no comments, we'll move to nine B, which is the approval of the consent item, C three P. Um, if a board member wishes to pull these items, if you'll call them out for me. Um, it's there, sorry. Can I have a motion to approve? I don't, well, first I need to ask, is there anyone wanting to pull? Sorry, is there anyone wanting to pull an item? I can't see you all. I'm so sorry.
I have none.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so can I have a motion?
Item C three P on consent.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll second it. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Uh, yes, do we, I'm sorry, which board members, uh, student board members voting tonight?
I.
Johanna, okay. Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin.
Yes. So the motion carries five zero. And this moves us to, um, action item number ten, instructional services. Um, Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the memorandum of understanding between Children's Hospital of Orange County and Laguna Beach Unified District to collaborate on initiatives to support students' health and will be?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colin. With that, um, since there are no hands raised, Dr. Keller, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, President Normandin. And esteemed members of the board, colleagues and guests, I'm excited to be sharing with you a brief presentation from our thought partners at Cho- Children's Hospital on our proposed action item on a memorandum, memorandum of understanding for a multi-year collaborative agreement. We share powerful goals around continuous improvement to improve student physical and social emotional health. And the proposed agreement aims to align healthcare, technical expertise within programs and services that we provide to our students. We started preliminary conversations with Cho- Children's Hospital and the Orange County Department of Education more than a year ago. And although our short-term priorities shifted to immediately address the issues of the pandemic, now more than ever, this proposed agreement amplifies the reach and impact of our overall student health services. And to tell you more, I'd like to introduce, um, a couple of special guests. First, Ilya Roman, Roland, excuse me. She is Cho- Children's Director of Community and Clinical Outreach and oversees school partnerships, primary care quality improvement projects, a clinic-based support program for new mothers and Help Me Grow Orange County. She has nearly thirty years of experience in public health and healthcare administration and has, has led numerous large-scale healthcare initiatives across Orange County. And I'd also like to introduce And I'd also like to introduce Dr. Mike Weiss. He's practiced general pediatrics in South Orange County for over twenty years. He's currently the Vice President of Population Health for Chalk Children's Hospital and oversees the clinical program for Chalk Health Alliance. He's the past president of the Orange County Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics and served as the Chair of the Chapter's Committee on Fitness and Nutrition, among other notable public health leadership roles in Orange County and the state of California. I'd like to welcome Dr. Mike Weiss and Ilya Rollon.
Thank you, Dr. Keller. Um, while you pull up our slides, um, first just a, a sound check. Everybody can hear me okay, I assume? Great.
Here you go.
I want to start by just thanking all of you, um, you know, board members, educators, administrators, uh, for all that you guys do. Uh, you know, we as, uh, healthcare providers sometimes overlook the important role that non-healthcare providers play in our children's lives. And, uh, it's very clear that your dedication, uh, is, uh, foremost. And, uh, the well-being of the kids is, is your, your goal. So thank you for all you are doing. Um, as Dr. Keller mentioned, um, Chalk, uh, shares the goal that, uh, the Laguna Beach Unified School District shares, which is that health really is not defined just as physical health, but it's really defined as physical, mental, emotional and academic health. And this is something that Chalk Children's really is starting to, uh, branch out into, which is the idea that, uh, the reality is very few, thank God, uh, families and children actually use Chalk Children's Hospital. Uh, but we should be really intervening proactively with the majority of the population in the county to prevent illness. And, uh, I will give, uh, Dr. Valoria and Dr. Keller a ton of credit for being proactive and recognizing the importance of the mental health challenges, uh, in Orange County and particularly in Laguna Beach, well before the COVID epidemic, uh, but now certainly exacerbated by that epidemic. So I'd like to share with you some of the, um, areas that we are looking to collaborate on. Um, and Ilia and I will be more than happy to answer any questions. Uh, based upon, uh, even before the pandemic, it was very well recognized in the pediatric literature and in the academic literature, uh, that we needed to go out to where kids are. And so this idea of wellness centers is not a new idea. Uh, we've visited centers all across California, uh, and these centers are becoming, uh, somewhat of a norm, uh, in many areas of the country. So if we go to the next slide, um, part of our collaboration is this wellness, uh, and prevention, uh, component. But I also wanted to share with you, uh, some other things that are already occurring. Uh, we were able about a year and a half ago to provide, um, uh, secure consented access for school nurses across the county to our Chalk Electronic Health Record, helping to facilitate, uh, five oh four plans, uh, IEPs, and really just, uh, collaborate across that continuum so that we could be working together, uh, for the betterment of the children. Uh, we've also made available a case manager at Chalk to be able to help, uh, facilitate care. And then more recently, we've made available a psychiatric consultation line. And this line is focused on providing a resource for staff to better direct, uh, intervention and discussion about what's best for any given, uh, young person who is, uh, experiencing a crisis. Um, we're going to talk more here about this well space, but basically what we're talking about is an area, I like to use the medical term, uh, where kids can go and chill. Uh, this is about how do we go to a non-stigmatized place where we can practice mindfulness? We can reduce stress, maybe have a little snack, hear about, uh, healthy living, uh, and, uh, basically decompress. So if we go to the next slide, people use the term wellness center, well space. It means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. We are focusing on the kids. We are, we are not focusing on a wellness situation where it's about referring to resources for families, that type of thing, although that's part of it. Uh, but we're really looking at physical space. And the idea here is that this is not just, oh, go to the office and there's a little corner of the office where you can go chill. Um, we know from the literature that we're really needing to find a non-stigmatized permanent space that is, um, known by the, uh, the faculty, known by the students to be that safe place. Uh, we have, uh, engaged with, uh, Orange County Department of Education staff, uh, who have expertise in what, in what's called biophilic design. And I'll show you some examples in a moment, uh, that really make it feel like home. It doesn't feel like a room in a school. It doesn't feel, uh, clinical in any way, shape or form. If we go to the next slide. So we broken this into really three phases. And what I'm going to share with you tonight is mostly about phase one. Uh, I'll let you know about phase two and three, which I think are opportunities that we can build on as we go forward. Uh, but basically space of calm is that phase one. And it's a, it's a large, uh, office. It can be a classroom. Uh, the furnishings create that space of calm. Uh, we have a certified staff member who's available to supervise that space. Um, and then we make available, uh, easy, low-cost items that we know, uh, are conducive to, uh, that calmness and that relaxation. So things like essential oils, teas, uh, various mindfulness type, uh, exercises. We go to the next slide. So we have, uh, started this process in, uh, a few districts across the county. Uh, we have ten memoranda of, of understanding that have been executed, uh, in various districts. Uh, and, uh, the first well spaces that we've opened are in the Los Alamos School District. And I'm going to share with you what that transformation looks like. Uh, just so you know, the branding of this is really multi-layered. We have learned from the students that we really want them to own it. We want them to endorse it. We want them to feel like it's their place. So the, the top level branding of these spaces is really around the school. So as you can see here, one of our first spaces at McCallum Medical Middle School, uh, they incorporated the school colors, uh, incorporated the school. And then the next layer is the district, uh, and, and/or the school. And then down to Chalk and the Orange County Department of Education in terms of that partnership. Let me show you some examples of what this looks like. If you look at the left, this was kind of a standard classroom, uh, beforehand. And after our design team came in, you can see on the right, uh, it's pretty easy to see what that design looks like. It's, it's smooth edges, it's soft colors, uh, and it really just transforms the room into a safer, uh, type environment. You look at the next slide, another example on the left, uh, transforming to the right, uh, again, based on the design. I'm kind of whipping through these. You can certainly have the presentation, spend more time looking at the pictures. Uh, next slide, another example. Uh, this was a really unique space because it had that open window. And the idea here would be that a counselor or a certified staff member could actually office in that space and be available for, uh, any discussions, interventions that would be necessary. But it wouldn't be, again, the stigma of, oh, I went to the office. It, it's more about feeling very safe there. These spaces are used in the other, uh, locations, primarily before school, uh, passing periods, lunch period, after school. Uh, and again, uh, it's a space where kids can get together and feel safe. You noticed yoga mats, uh, in that basket. So the opportunity to, uh, provide those types of classes as well. Next slide, please. Another example where you can see that transformation, uh, over on the right. And next slide. More examples for you. You can see the, the one school, the mascot is the eagle and they incorporated that picture on the wall. So beyond, uh, phase, uh, one, we start to get into phase two and phase three. And again, these are, uh, further down the road, but I think with the vision of Dr. Keller and Dr. Valoria, uh, I don't think these are too far behind because they've already been, uh, entertaining many of these. And, and I will tell you that all the way at the extreme, we have embedded a psychologist at Modern Day High School and are entertaining the same situation at another school, uh, in Orange County. So there's a full spectrum of, uh, of the types of offerings that we have. But phase two would be, uh, uh, the support staff, uh, in or near the well space, uh, coordinating, um, student services and referrals through that space. And then providing services, uh, that we can provide through a telehealth platform, uh, with counseling, crisis intervention, various education for both students, uh, staff, uh, as well as, uh, as parents, and then the ability to refer to appropriate resources. Uh, the next, uh, is phase three, where it gets a little deeper, where, uh, depending upon the desire and the relationship we develop, uh, we would be able to, uh, actually do screenings, uh, provide preventive care. Uh, we have relationships with, uh, Healthy Smiles of Orange County. Uh, and, and you can see many other opportunities for mentoring, uh, and for, uh, youth support, uh, going forward. So next slide, please. Um, we've created a menu of services, uh, that really outlines the various, uh, components that we can offer. And our approach is that we're there to meet you where you are ready to go. Uh, and, uh, and to work collaboratively with you, uh, to meet your needs. Uh, go to the next slide. And this is the final slide. So basically, uh, we've worked with Dr. Keller and Dr. Valoria and, uh, delineated some of the, um, ideas on our menu that made sense, uh, for Laguna Beach Unified. Uh, talked about potential sites for well spaces. Um, the, uh, MOU that is on your agenda today has been vetted, uh, legally by the Orange County Department of Education. And as I mentioned, nine other districts, and, um, I, I believe your, your team has also reviewed this at length. Um, so, uh, our hope is that, uh, after this evening, we've generated some excitement and interest, uh, on your board's part. Uh, we would love to move forward with selecting schools, designating sites and really working toward, uh, opening, uh, a, a well space for Laguna Beach Unified School District. So I, I know that was very quick. I appreciate the time. I know you guys are all very busy and have a packed agenda. But, uh, we can all agree, this is an extremely, extremely important concept, uh, at this point in time. So thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time. Does anyone, any board members have any questions or our student reps?
I just want to give the call. I think this is definitely, uh, from a student perspective, this is an awesome initiative to be doing. I think that we, 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 right now, we, we bring dogs on campus during finals. And it's like, it's so fun to have that kind of break from the school environment, which promotes the, you know, educational aspect and also that, you know, comfort aspect and the connection aspect is so important. I know, uh, Dr. Keller has protégized this in so many different ways, um, right with child success, with our mentorship initiatives. I think this is a great step forward in that.
Thank you, Luke.
Michael, I agree with our student rep. I think it's a, 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 just an enhancement to what we've started to work on here. And you have provided that, that leadership and it's, uh, a growing need. And I, and I think one of the things at the heart of it is that we're bringing it to where the students are. And that's, uh, a really important aspect.
Since I'm not, since I'm not in my head, Jen, I'm worried before we get into discussion. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And was that Osborne for a second?
Yes.
Now for a second, okay. Now, now any discussions or that anyone wants to make?
This. Sure. Um, this reminds me of what I saw at Corona Del Mar High School, although they called it something different. But I love the way the students really used it. And, you know, would run in even just between classes to just take a little break or have a smile or, you know, get a little snack. And I think this is well worth it and really needed. And I think our students will really take advantage of this space.
I have a question for Dr. Keller. Doctor, or I don't know if. Irene White, for one of you, but Dr. Keller, if a student already has in their IAP or their five oh four, you know, um, ability to leave a classroom for self-regulation, I know some of those will direct them to where they're allowed to go. Would this be the space or just an additional space like they could go to for that? Because I heard you're envisioning.
This could be a space, yes. So right now they're able to go to the office and probably see a counselor or maybe their case manager. But this would be an opportunity to get another location that's, that's built out for that, that self-regulation piece and, and stabilize the student and send them back to class when they're ready.
Perfect. Okay. It looks like a, it looked like a much lovelier space. That's what I was wondering if it becomes a space or not. Is that you, Jim? Did you have a question? Yes, Jim, go ahead.
Uh, I have a comment. First, I want to thank CHOP for the wonderful job they're doing in Orange. Can you hear me?
Yes. We can.
I, I, I wanted to thank CHOP for the wonderful job they're doing in Orange County. Uh, you see, you see Irvine closed their adolescent unit, uh, and CHOP took over those responsibilities. And so they're really at the forefront of what's going on. Um, I know that there is a grant that supports this and I know that, um, there's, uh, the, the contract is a boilerplate that is going to all these districts. My concern with the contract is it talks about, uh, our nurses as the contact, uh, people. We have two nurses who are so overwhelmed with what they're doing. Uh, now, uh, I, I can't believe why we don't change the language that it also, the mental health professionals, the social workers and the counselors can also have access as far as to this, this program. Uh, when I did my postdoc at UCLA Department of Psychiatry, we called this Milu therapy, uh, a form, a form of that. Uh, I, 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 I believe that, you know, uh, uh, it's, 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 it's workable. Uh, it's, 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 it's a, a wonderful, uh, assistance. It's not a panacea for, for everything. I'm, I'm more concerned about our professionals who are interfacing with CHOP and how they are able to access the services of, of CHOP. Thank you.
So I, I, I'd be happy to just address that briefly. I, I think, um, as far as the access, uh, with the nurses, um, we, uh, by providing the, uh, electronic health record access, have really tried to make this more streamlined. So, uh, bear with me, I'll do this quickly. But a, a typical, uh, situation for a school nurse would be a student has a medical condition. Uh, they require a medical records to be able to document something in an IEP. A phone call or a, or a fax would go to CHOP. It would sit somewhere, somebody might make a copy of records, fax them over. Big delay, lots of extra work. And by having the access to the electronic health record, those nurses now have the ability to go in directly and see those medical records real time, uh, to facilitate that care. So we see an efficiency there. And just for clarity, the, um, well, space is not staffed by the nurses. The well space is staffed by Dr. Keller's people, uh, that will be, um, uh, doing that supervision. So I, I, that may have been unclear in what I, uh, stated. So I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you. That's correct. Yes, thank you.
And I think part of that concern is whether, um, there's a need for a psychiatric nurse or not, or something along those lines. If that's the support chalk would need to make this happen, I think. So thank you for that explanation of how it works on your end. Obviously our superintendent and Dr. Keller, they would consider if that's needed or not. Any other questions from any other board members? And if, I think if you guys use your raise the hand function, you actually will pop to the front of my screen. And then I can.
Carol, you stopped my video.
I, I did?
It says you can start your video because the co-host has stopped it.
I'm not a co-host though, but, um.
Co-host is.
Can you, could someone start Jim's video again?
That might have been to enhance his audio.
Could be because you were breaking, you were breaking. It was hard to hear you. So that could be.
The audio.
Thank you.
Are we? Okay. Yes, ma, yes, Clerk Osborne.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Rice, Dr. Keller and team, thank you guys very much for this. Um, one comment and one question. The comment is on the design piece of it. Um, I really enjoyed seeing some of those pictures of those indoor environments. And at our middle school, um, a couple of years back, I worked on a project, an outdoor space to create kind of a wellness garden between school power and, um, that's our education foundation, the site, the district. And it was really designed to be a calming space. And wow, what a difference good design makes on how students could maybe potentially stand around and look at screens on their ten-minute break to having a natural space that reflects maybe their, um, you know, some of their tendencies and their desires and, um, create a calm space. So I really, um, want to emphasize the, uh, the focus that I think you guys see on design and how that can draw students in. Uh, my question is just on timing. So, you know, we're, we're in this, um, COVID year with a lot of emphasis on supporting our students' mental health. And I'm just curious when, um, when we think we might see these, if this MOU is approved, I guess.
Well, I will tell you that we are pretty far down the road. We've been working with Dr. Keller and Dr. Valoria. Like I said, even since before the COVID pandemic. I believe we've identified a site and we have engaged staff. So I think we're probably looking, Ilya is going to shoot me because she gets to implement. I get to promise and she gets to. But we're probably looking, you know, within a few month period. I mean, not, we're not talking about a whole year. I will share with you in full transparency that, not surprisingly, we have a number of districts that are extremely interested in this concept for obvious reasons. But because we've been talking with Dr. Keller and Dr. Valoria for so long, you are in our early adopter group. And I would expect we could get this done. Ilya, I'm winking at you through the computer. Two to three months?
Yes, sorry, I've been on mute because there's, this seems to be an unusually active evening in my household, so. A little loud, but we fully expect to be able to do the installation, certainly before the end of our fiscal year, which is in June. You know, we haven't, this is a fairly new process for us. Certainly, I have health educators and quality improvement advisors who are now sort of teaming up on design, not necessarily part of their job duties, but they have enthusiastically taking it on. And we have identified some efficiencies that I think will help us speed along a little bit more quickly now. So like Mike said, or Dr. Weiss, we do expect to have yours completed, provided that we have the school identified and that the space itself is prepared and ready for us to come in. We would have that done within two to three months.
And if I could add one thing, I do want to make a comment that I think is important. You know, I've been around this county practicing Peds for over 30 years and programs come and programs go. And the idea here is not for something that is going to be transient and go away. CHOC has this concept in its strategic plan. There is budget at CHOC. There is a team at CHOC focused on these school relationships. Ilya, by, you know, virtue of being here, she is part of that. It's a very big part of my role in population health. So we are here for the long haul. And we look for this to be extremely sustainable and hopefully not dependent ultimately on grant dollars and philanthropy.
That's great news. And I just saw Soren's hand. Did you put it back down, Soren? I'm waiting for, yeah, Soren's hands up. Yes, Soren.
I was gonna ask, there was a student aspect involved in the design form. And I hear that you're saying there's, you have your own desires, but I think it'd be cool to see what students want. And I think our district, we have students who be willing to participate in that. That'd be a great way to kind of form those connections at all levels.
Yeah, Soren, I'm glad you brought that up because even in the naming of this space, we we, believe it or not, we were a bunch of nerds. And we had a consultant and we went through all this stuff. And then the the young people told us, no, we want you to call it this. And that's what made sense. Because the reality is unless you and your and your classmates love it, endorse it and believe in it, it isn't going to happen, right? So absolutely, there's a student component to engaging in this, what it turns into, what it looks like, what it can be. So great point. Thank you for bringing that up.
And just to to add to that, I think that's an excellent idea. The designer that we work with at the Orange County Department of Education, she is probably somebody that we can connect with either yourself or another student representative. We are very, we really want to make sure that we infuse each space with its own individual, you know, personality. We don't want it to be a cookie cutter kind of situation where if you go to a well space in Los Alamos, it looks identical to the one in Laguna Beach. It really should reflect your culture and community within your district and within your school. So if you would like to pass that along to Dr. Keller, we're more than happy to make that connection so that there's a partnership in design.
As you say, and I think I think they're on top, I think Dr. Keller and Dr. Valoria are on top of that, making sure the students are involved in that process. So and then Member Perry, you have your hand up. And it doesn't work. You guys do pop to the front of my screen when you put your hand up. So thank you for doing that.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it worked or not, but.
It worked. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Soren, for those suggestions. I think that's really important for the students to make it theirs. And you're more excited to go somewhere if a friend of yours helped do it than on your own. I had just two questions, one about privacy. And the other one was, what if somebody comes in at the end of school or after school? Can they still be helped or be there?
So I'll I'll address the second question first. Obviously, the approach is that this will always be staffed. So we would not have it be an open space where where kids are coming and going without certified staff supervision. And I see Dr. Keller nodding. With respect to privacy, we would follow HIPAA and FERPA rule as it relates to any type of issue, you know, if a if a young person was in imminent danger, we would address that. If they wanted privacy for appropriate situations, we would certainly honor that. But it's really driven by HIPAA and FERPA, and we would follow that.
Thank you. So we could possibly do the hour. So maybe it it did go on a little bit after the regular school day. And maybe start later. I don't know. But, okay, thank you.
I was gonna say earlier too, whatever, I think that's, yeah, depending upon the student body, what their needs are. Right, which we know as they transition through, they have different needs.
Right.
Is there, are there any other, and then do you have to put your hand back down? There's a function to lower it too. Thank you. And anyone else with any questions or comments? I really want to thank all of you. I know you've been working on this for a long time. And really appreciate all you're doing for all of the kids of Orange County. You know, our heart is here, but you work with all of them and really appreciate your work, both of you. And so it looks like that is the end of discussion. And so, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Stain.
I'm sorry, you abstained? Okay, member.
Clerk, Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes. So that's four, zero, zero, one.
Four, four, zero, one.
For sure. Oh, I don't have to say the other A if it's not, okay, four, zero, one. So machine carriers, four, zero, one. And that misses forward to 10B. And thank you again for all your support. And this next, this next item is approval of course of study for Laguna Beach Unified School District. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak to the approval of the course stage? Laguna Beach Unified School District Secondary Schools for 2021, 2022 school year?
Yes, we have several hands up. So I think the first hand up belongs to Scott.
Okay, Scott. Can you please provide your public comment for tonight?
Hey, how you doing tonight?
We're doing well, thanks.
I apologize. I'm in Miami on business. So I had a couple of questions for the gentleman who was talking about the safe spaces.
Oh, we just discussed that, but you can either say them now and what we can, you can get information in an email, or you could email that information to Dr. Valoria, and you could get that information for you.
Great. If I had to email, that's be wonderful. My quick question was, what training are they going to do to, for HIPAA? To protect the privacy of the children, especially ones who are 18 and still in school? And the second thing was, did he actually use the term essential oils?
Yes.
Okay. So how do I get his email address?
If you could email Dr. Valoria.
Yeah, what's his email address?
Um. You know, Mr. Collin, is it something you could do offline? Or I don't know if it matters.
It it's public information.
It doesn't matter. Okay. So D, it's J, Valoria, V I L O R I A at LBUSD.org.
Great. And I will address these questions to him. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for your time. Mr. Collin, are there more speakers on this item tonight?
Yes, the next hand we have is Amy. It's, yeah, now your turn to speak.
Amy, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amy Hunhausen. I think you all know me. I have a daughter who's a freshman in high school and a son who's a sixth grader at Thurston. My primary interest tonight relates to the proposal of the Integrated Honors Science II class. And I first want to thank the Laguna Beach High School Science teachers, Dr. Ellman, and in particular, Dr. Mayberry, for their great patience and assistance navigating our concerns. And of course, Dr. Valoria for pointing me to the right people. The freshman class this year was the first to experience the new integrated science curriculum. And it was during a pandemic nonetheless. While the education and critical thinking, in my opinion, was well done by an excellent teacher, there was a very startling de-emphasis in theory without a single exam. This highly experiential model may be perfect for students interested in non-STEM careers. But as a practicing electrical engineer for the past 24 years, I firmly believe this approach would leave students bound for the sciences with large learning disadvantages relative to their peers in other districts. As such, I was thrilled to hear about the Integrated Science, you know, two honors proposal. So I'm speaking because I think it is vital that this honors course be designed to be markedly different from the normal Integrated Science II course. And that it must strongly focus on preparing our STEM-oriented students for AP Biology, either ACR or whatever advanced chemistry you'll need to do, and college-level science. For the post-pandemic year in particular, I think it's clear that there will need to be extra supplementation in chemistry that the kids did not get this year, that may be, may not be required in future years. So my main focus and my main concern is making sure that our kids have all the necessary scaffolding they need to be successful in AP Biology, Advanced Chemistry and College Level Courses. And I think you need a dramatically different, you know, IS II honors course than the kind of approach with IS I in terms of the theoretical emphasis. I also would be interested in learning a little more about the Curriculum Council that approved the original Integrated Science pathways. I was wondering if the parent representatives included any people with experience in STEM careers. Is it possible to have such representation added in the future? Particularly when there are changes in STEM course pathways? I think we need voices from people who have been in medicine or in engineering or in science. Finally, I just want to alert the board that even though these changes in curriculum are mentioned in the ITSA rap emails, the descriptions are normally a couple of sentences in a paragraph in a blast email. And the overwhelming majority of parents I've spoken to have just no idea about what these new Integrated Science pathways are, how they relate to the advanced science classes, what the material is. And I've spoken to quite a few parents about this topic in the past month or two. And I had this, a similar impression with the.
That's three minutes at this time.
Okay, well, thank you. That's that is.
Thank you so much.
Amy, thank you for your time. And if you would please keep working with Dr. Mayberry, he could answer all the questions that you had.
Yeah, he's been great. I should throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collin, are there more speakers?
Yes, next would be Sabrina. You're now.
Hi, hi, Sabrina, if you can give us your comment.
Yes, hi, good evening. I just wanted to reinforce what Amy said. Actually, I think since I didn't really know the order that we would be speaking in, she pretty much covered everything, all most of my concerns. I just wanted to, I have a senior in LBHS and a freshman as well. And I just want to also speak in support of adding and approving the honors option for Integrated Science II. The previous, you know, course progression that my senior took included the honors option for 10th grade chemistry. And with the shift from the single subject bio and chem to this Integrated Science I and II, I think that honors option should be maintained. I also totally agree with Amy that the sort of large shift in curriculum and approach wasn't that clearly communicated to parents. So if there's any way that more information could be provided to parents about that kind of what's involved, that would be great, especially even with the trimesters. I think Integrated Science was taught over more than one trimester. And so there wasn't even like, oh, like, you know, teacher back to school night for the kids who happened to have Integrated Science not in the first trimester. So there wasn't even an opportunity to have the teacher present what the shift in curriculum was. So I just wanted to reiterate that I think that the Integrated Science honors course would be really a good thing for our kids to have and make sure that it is differentiated, as Amy mentioned, in depth and rigor to challenge the kids, but also prepare them well for the advanced single science AP courses. And it would be great if there's any way to kind of assess and identify whatever holes that might have resulted, not only from, you know, the introduction of a new Integrated Science, but also just the challenges from the past year. And we're really lucky, you know, to have great science teachers at LBHS. And I think we have lots of kids who are interested and excited about science. And so we just, I just really want to make sure we support them. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Mr. Collin, or is there anyone else wanting to speak?
Yes, the next on the list is Sheri Morgan. It's now your turn.
I think. I just wanted to go back to the speaker about the wellness room. I think that's wonderful. I was with Dee when we went to Corona Del Mar High School, and the program was fabulous. The kids embraced it and loved it. So anyway, back on to this one. I also agree with what Amy is saying and Sabrina as well. I think that it's very important that we have an honors pathway to this program, to the science program. I'd like to remind the board, and you will be looking at this later tonight, under course of study, Board Policy 615, 6143, it states that the governing board recognizes a well-aligned sequence of courses fosters academic growth. District course study shall provide students with opportunities to attain the skills, knowledge and abilities they need to be successful. In paragraph two, it says, kind of midway through the paragraph, "The sequence of courses shall be designed to ensure that each course provides adequate preparation for the next course in the sequence, only utilizes prerequisites that are essential to success in a given program or course." The other concern with the honors program and not having our honors program is that it's not providing an equitable education for our students because there are other districts surrounding us that do offer the honors science pathway. And I think that we would be remiss in not offering that for our students and doing a disservice to our students, let alone is it even allowed under ed code. And finally, I was, I I I found my notes from when the Integrated Science Pathway was first presented because I was at that meeting. And I think that there was, if I recall, there were parents that were speaking out against this and their concerns because it didn't offer an honors pathway that was so important. And I think that it's time and time again, we see experts in our community that come forward and express their concerns. And I think in an effort to make us a more community-connected board and district, it would be essential to have parents like that on a committee, as Amy said, but have them be an equitable voice, not just a one or two vote person voice if the rest of the room is filled with administrator staff or what have you. We need to bring a parent voice to the table. And if you offer a back and forth opportunity for parents, you probably would get a lot of less frustration as well because they can ask questions after information is presented as well as before. For like, right now, you might say, we're going to pass it, but because nobody is really aware of what you're going to discuss, we don't know. And we don't have an opportunity to ask questions unless it's a one-on-one conversation with whoever has been designated to respond. And I think when you're having a public meeting, people are asking questions because they want to hear a public response. They'd like to know who's attending. They'd like to know who else is concerned. And in this format of Zoom, we don't know who's in attendance and we don't understand what other people's concerns or what the responses are to other people's concerns because it's all divided.
That's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri, Mr. Collin, is there any other speakers on this?
Yes, we currently have three more. So the next is Shannon Tune. You're you're up.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening. So I thank you very much for addressing this subject. And I just wanted to weigh in and wholeheartedly support Amy's comments that is approving the IS II honors and and also at some point, hopefully in the very near future, adding an IS I honors. I see the benefit of the integrated approach. I love it, especially at the middle school level and for high school students not pursuing a STEM pathway. But I would like to see our district provide the most rigorous possible course of studies in this area for STEM students. I did want to ask, I imagine the staff plans to explain what the pending. I did want to ask, I imagine the staff plans to explain what the pending status means under the UC-approved column. I mean, I can't imagine the district would implement a course that has any risk of not being approved, but it'd be nice to hear how that works. And then lastly, if there's any way to provide a booster lab class over the summer for incoming high school freshmen, since most of them won't have had that this year, that would be terrific. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. And I know that they will, they can speak to the pending thing. And for summer, I know there's evaluation for that as well. Thank you. Super. Thanks.
Okay, next speaker. Maya, it's your turn.
Hi, my name is Maya Trango. I'm a freshman at the high school, and I just completed Integrated Science I. And although the teacher is great, I had Mr. Sogo as my teacher, I was really disappointed in the curriculum. And I feel as though everything was kind of generalized. And if Integrated Science II is similar to that, I am afraid that I won't be adequately prepared for AP classes and college-level classes as a student who plans to pursue a career in STEM. So I think implementing a Integrated Science II honors class will help me prepare for those future classes. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in, Maya. And I assure you that Mr. Sogo's goal in life is that you are prepared for college-level science. So he lives for that. Thank you for your comment.
Sorry, next speaker, Brenda. It's your turn.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm going to be brief. So my name is Brenda. I have a daughter who is a freshman this year as well. She's also interested in pursuing a degree in science and occurring STEM. And I really just wanted to come and say that I've been following science pathways and all the things that have been going on, and I want to express my support as well for the IS II honors option that hopefully is coming up and also hoping that it'll be robust enough to fill in some gaps. We, thank you, Maya, for sharing because my daughter had the same experience in trimester two where it felt love, 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 Mr. Sogo, but it didn't feel like it was quite enough. And that's all I wanted to share. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours.
And
Is there one more?
There is. Next we have Kira.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Kira Hunhausen, and I am a current freshman at LBHS, and I have taken Integrated Science I. And I would just like to show my support and excitement for an Integrated Science II course or an honors Integrated Science II course. Personally, I would want to be an ER doctor. And when I grow, when I grow up and to do this, I need to take the AP sciences, obviously. So the thing is, this would not be easily possible without a more advanced class. After all, how can kids that want to attend AP classes be prepared if they are taking the same classes as those students who are not as interested in science and are not necessarily going to be going into APs? I know that many of my peers feel the same way. Some of us want to be pushed. We want to be advanced. And the Integrated Science II honors would be the way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Thanks for coming. Is there anyone else? Mr. Collin?
There's no one else this time.
Excuse me for a second, Mr. Collin. I got a note that somehow you're kicking people out after they speak.
I'll check with Victoria. I'm not clicking any buttons.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
They might be accidentally leaving without intending to by trying to, you know, take their hand down. I mean, that's, it's so sensitive if
That's true.
It's the wrong thing.
Yeah, we know.
Since there, thank you, Mr. Collin, for coordinating that for us. Since there are no more comments, Dr. Mayberry, again, congratulations, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. And before I throw this board item, I just wanted to say how excited and honored I am to have been selected as the new Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services. I've truly enjoyed my first two years here in Laguna Beach. I look forward to continuing to work collaboratively with staff, teachers, the board, the community, and especially the students. So thank you again for the opportunity. For this item, California EdCo requires that the government board of each school district to annually approve the course of study for secondary schools. The course study contains a listing of course titles with identification of their new courses, UC-approved and awaited. The LBSC Curriculum Council also reviews and makes recommendations regarding any of these new secondary-level courses. So today, we're bringing forward on this course of study two new courses, as mentioned earlier, at the high school, Integrated Science II and Integrated Science II honors with the course of study. Our high school science team has worked collaboratively over the last four years to develop these courses and pathway to align to the new state standards, along with all the other high schools in California. About a year and a half ago, I think it was October of 2019, the board held a study session on the new Integrated Science pathway courses. The high school science pathways were shared and discussed last year with the middle and high school PTA counselors, teachers. In January of last year, Curriculum Council reviewed and approved the Integrated Science I, and then the board, the next month in February of 2020, approved the Integrated Science I as well, with the pathway being presented then as well. These courses are step two in that proof curriculum from last year. Our current eighth graders are taking Integrated Science I this year. Next year, they would take Integrated Science II or Integrated Science II honors. Together, they would meet our graduation requirements for science. And if approved tonight, they would then be submitted for UC approval. Present that to you tonight.
Could you explain if it's, if it is or isn't approved by the UC for honors? Since they're the ones that do that, the board voted for those approvals to go through the UCs. So what happens if it is or isn't approved?
This one, this, if they're approved by the UC as an honors, then it would be weighted. Yes.
Okay. And those students that wanted that would go into that? That's the goal? Just, I know there are other questions about it, like what happens if it's not, or what does the pending mean? So I just hope you can extrapolate on what the pending.
Sure. The pending is just referencing that. We haven't submitted it yet. We're waiting for board approval to go forward with that this spring.
Makes perfect sense. Okay. Okay. Why would you before we prove it? Thank you. Okay, makes sense. Okay, are there any other questions before we go into discussion?
And one question, just
Go ahead, number three.
It, it would be a separate honors class, correct? Not a Integrated Science II class with honor students and on regular students in the same class, but the honor students may be getting more assignments or, you know, having different tests. It would be totally separate.
Are the high school teams working on that and what that would look like? And so whether that's a separate class or not, a lot of the factors include, you know, student interest, how many students are available teachers? So the high school is still is looking at that as it should be, it should be a separate class.
It should be a separate class. Okay. Yeah.
He said if it should be. Yes, just a clarification. Did you say if it should be a separate class or it is to be a separate class?
If it should be, yes.
If it should be. Okay. Well, okay, thank you. Before we get into discussion, though, can I have a motion in the way? Discussion. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, member Vickers. Who was the first one? Victoria, did you get that?
Kelly.
Oh, Kelly was Clark Osborne. Okay. And then member Vickers.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, now discussion. Go ahead, number Perry.
Oh, um, I think I would, I, to vote for this, I would have to know that it was going to be a separate class. I'm also concerned about our students not having the depth that want to go into, go into STEM. I know that I looked at like Irvine has both. They have an Integrated Science class, but you can also take biology. If you take biology, then you can't take Integrated Science. Other districts around us haven't totally gone that direction. I also think it limits kids in their electives and what they can take. If they have to take Integrated Science II, they can't choose then chemistry because we're not offering that. I I wonder if, can, can students maybe have the option to take it at community college and get credit? And then not take the Integrated Science if it's, if it's not going to be an honors class?
I think, just going back to your original question about how it's taught. I mean, that's, we leave those decisions up to the experts, which are teachers, to make those determinations. The approval of the course and how it's run, you know, dependent on the enrollment. And obviously, you know, that will be a discussion that we'll continue to have regarding, you know, how is the, what is the best way by which to deliver this coursework? But I truly trust the teachers. They are the curriculum experts in this area. We have a long track record of, you know, providing strong academics in science and STEM careers to our students in this district. And I do not believe our teachers would in any way jeopardize that preparation as they design and develop these courses. I mean, that is the intent of what they do. And I know that that's been, that this process has been once that we started five years ago. When I walked in the door was the first time we started talking about science in Laguna Beach as we determined, you know, what was our pathway going to be? And the science team at the high school spent a lot of time, they spent a lot of time with you as well, board. They spent time with you, giving you the examples of what it would look like in study sessions. And, you know, I trust that they will make the best decision based off of the coursework, right? And how they are the ones to design and implement that. The course catalog, just as we're clear, this is all courses, not just Integrated Sciences, or just the two two new courses that are highlighted. There are others as well that are being added to the course catalog this year, CCA courses, et cetera. But I just want to be clear that, you know, traditionally, the decision regarding how courses are offered is left up, you know, to the school site to determine how and best placement of those courses, as has always been the case.
I was concerned because we had a professor, a science professor from UCI come. And he said, "In sciences, our students that have gone to UCI were not prepared. We're behind." And I don't, I don't want them to get further behind with a program that doesn't give them the depth.
I don't believe that's something we need to worry about, but I've, I've never heard that before. So.
I haven't heard that either. I have a question, Carol, not a question, but part of a clarification.
Sure.
So our student says ninth grade, take Integrated Science I, Integrated Science II as a sophomore, whether it's an honors class or not, they can still take two more years of science. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they, they can have four, four years, they can have AP classes, they could have ACR in those other two years.
Correct. Similar to our current pathway that would go biochem. Students could, you know, they currently could have taken, take physics, take marine biology, take AP bio, AP physics, ACR, et cetera. And so it'd be, you know, same process. It'll just go, they could take Integrated III if they wish, or which will be coming forward to the board next year for approval. Or again, they can go into any of the other pathways as they so desire.
Thank you.
And just to echo or add on to what Dr. Valoria said, I can assure you that all the teachers have been a part of the process of developing these courses, including the ones that are currently teaching AP physics and AP bio and ACR. So they're well aware of any shifts in curriculums that may impact their current courses. And our AP physics and AP bio have had pass rates the last, I say, two, three, four years that have all been, you know, between 92 and 100% pass rate. So those courses that have previously led to that, they're well aware, and with any shifts, they've been a part of the process all along the way.
And I do want to say that we've had many students come and speak with us or as a board and also contact individually, as well as I have a child who graduated last year who's in, you know, engineering program. But they all talked about how they were so far advanced, especially in labs. You know, where everybody was asking them, how did they learn that? And she'd say, "So go." And MUN was tuning in one night to one of our sessions where a student had talked about that. And my son recently made a comment that he had to so-go people too, and go, "I learned that so go." So he was writing a 10-page report because he learned something from SOGO, right? That they, they hadn't learned from whoever their teachers were and how they felt he was advanced. And I see Soren's hand up as perfect timing for a student to speak. Go ahead, Soren.
Thank you. Yes, I'll say, I think first off, thank you, Kira and Maya for speaking. I really appreciate more student voices up here. And this would kind of sort of refers a little bit. Yeah, we have amazing science programs. I'm personally not in a STEM career, not only in STEM, but I have tons of friends that are. I'd be happy to put you guys in contact with them. They've done programs so much, like as a small school, we don't necessarily have like all these opportunities to offer such a wide variety. But there's, but we do offer opportunities to like jump and leap wherever you want to go. I have friends who, they were working at, you know, at UCI. I have friends who are, I think, this is one of my friends, Mark F. Timmy, he's doing some crazy stuff. I couldn't even comprehend. And I'd love to put you guys in contact with them. I'm sure they'd be willing to talk about their experiences and help you guys along that path. It's in there. I can assure you, they're very well-prepared, and they're going to go kill at some crazy schools and design, you know, the next, the next COVID vaccine. So I promise you that, you know, we, we do prepare soon for science. And as far as the waiting goes, most colleges, kind of like they do their own waiting things. It's not big an issue. It's more like the content you're learning, and there's programs like AER even that aren't necessarily immediate science, but where you could work with a scientist or ACR where you work specifically with science. There are so many opportunities we offer to, you know, go take your own initiative. I think that's kind of the best place to learn. So just want to add that. Thank you guys so much for speaking.
Thank you, Soren. And you could always have those people email the board as an entirety. It's the best way for us to gather information, right, for us to see if they're, if they're willing. So if you want to find out if you're willing, we're happy to hear about what they've done. So appreciate that. And Clark Osborne, I see your hand up. Thank you for raising it.
Yes, you know, I look over the course, the course of study list, and I see a lot of great courses on there. I think our discussion has been limited just to sciences, to STEM, to Integrated Science II, Integrated Science II honors. But I did just want to make sure that we're all paying attention to the entire course catalog. Also, I want to pull up a little bit to what, you know, with my experience with NGSS, my experience as a parent, my experience on Curriculum Council the last couple of years, which is separate from my experience as a new board member. The concepts behind NGSS, which are driving science education reform in our country, are designed to help pull more students into the sciences to make us as, you know, make us effectively educate students in the sciences and prepare them for STEM careers at a better and more effective rate. As a country, we're, we're falling behind there. So those standards that are driving the shift to Integrated Science, which is very different, and I totally get that, are, we don't want to lose sight of what we're doing here and where we're going with NGSS. And so for anybody that maybe didn't participate in that study session, I think if there is repeating, the goal is to pull more children into the sciences, to give more opportunity. And to do that in an integrated science model is, you know, I think is really important that the concept of cross-cutting concepts across the disciplines is very important. And that's, I really truly believe that's what's driving that course design. And I fully support it, and I hope that the kids that already loved the sciences still have a very rigorous pathway. And from everything I've heard you say about our science educators, I believe that that can happen. But I see more students coming into those areas. So I just want to point that out. And I'm so glad that it looks like there's an honors course there as well and how that gets decided. You know, and how that gets placed, like Dr. Valoria said, is really at the discretion of the people that are doing that work. And I don't think that's within the purview of the board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Clark Osborne. Well stated. And it's based on what the student choice is. And I do, I applaud Sogo four or five years ago, whatever it was, when he looked at the equity, when he and Dr. Valoria had a conversation around all of that, around equity in science and getting more kids to want to participate. Right? And he was great. He reached out to kids at Thurston for math and other things as well. And other teachers have as well. I'm speaking about him because his name came up, right? So using him as example, but other teachers do as well. I think the equity issue is a big deal. I think that when you have kids varying different interests together in a room, they really, they really challenge each other to embrace that subject matter, whatever it happens to be. In this case, we're talking science. And thank you again, Clark Osborne, for pointing out that we have all of these other classes we're approving as well. And that's what we normally talk about is all the AP classes and a lot of our classes and stuff like that. We just kind of, we're talking about science because it's, this is a new transition for people in high schools. Okay, so are there any other comments, discussion? Okay, so are there any other comments, discussion?
Yes.
I'm like, oh, yes, number, you went to the top. I missed your hand. Go ahead.
Sorry. I wanted to comment about some of the other classes, but I also wanted to say, didn't, didn't the student Maya say she didn't feel that her integrated science class, the one that she took, gave her enough, enough depth?
It's not supposed to yet. It's supposed to give you this very broad understanding.
Was being well-prepared. For, I was just looking at some of the other, other classes and the offerings like through CTE. And I see that the other districts, as we know, give weight, give honors weight. Like Alisa Nigell gives it to 11 classes, Capo Valley to nine, San Juan Hills to 11, et cetera. Laguna gives it to zero. And in fact, two classes that are given on our campus, both Scott Whitkop's multimedia design class and the medical core class. Our honors credit is given to San Clemente students that come here to take it, but not to our students. And then looking at the articulated college credits, so the classes students can take during high school and that match up for college credit. Like Alisa Nigell and the ones on their campus during school hours. Alisa Nigell gives credit, has college credit for 19 classes. Capo Valley 12, San Clemente 12, Laguna Beach 3. And it seems like we could be offering more to our students in, in these ways. College is very expensive these days, and if they can get some credit going in, I think that would be really helpful. I think we could, you know, add some things for our students.
Are you asking, are you talking about, I have to separate what you're talking, are you talking about credit or are you talking about credit like for college credit or you talk about honors? Okay, so honors, okay, so honors, you're part of the vote, you voted that.
And I voted, yeah, I, my vote didn't pass.
Right, so but the board.
Can I respond? Because
Yeah.
There is misrepresentation actually of, of courses. So just so we're clear, the multimedia design honors class here gets, is weighted. Medical core is weighted. So I guess I'm, you mentioned several of those as examples. All the CCA courses, adamant of justice is weighted, auto-technology honors weighted, business management entrepreneur is weighted. EMT honors, fashion design. So I guess I'm confused as to which courses you're claiming we're not weighting.
Well, I looked at the report that you sent today and the CCA report, and it said that we weren't weighting them. In fact, it made a special note to say they were weighted for San Clemente students, but not for Laguna students.
Okay, well, I think the board agenda has the course of study attached. That has the most up-to-date. Your question today was around college courses that are offered. And obviously, we can only offer so many, seeing that we're so small and even being able to run those is, is challenging because we need a critical mass. My reference to the career and college and career courses was specific to the articulation that exists between students who are in those programs that, you know, our relationship with CCA allows our students those, those options to, to get dual credit. So that was a different question. Dual credit concurrent enrollment. Were, so I guess I maybe misunderstood your, your request today.
Part of, part of my request, I know Capistrano in, in August made a board policy that their students could take any, any classes at community college and get credit. They, it wasn't limited to foreign language and the arts. They can take classes that are given at the high school and get credit. And I met with students from Dana Hills actually last week, and they were really excited, especially about a biotech class that they were taking at Irvine Valley College. That teacher was the best they'd ever had. But my point is, we are small, we can't give students as many choices. But if we did something like that, we could. It'd be open for them. And it's been really great right now because classes are online. So it's been pretty easy.
Remember, remember Perry, I, I'm having a hard time tracking how this has to do with the topic of this course study that we have in front of us.
Well.
So I don't want to talk about things that aren't on the agenda because it's unfair.
I'll bring it up during summer. So should I bring it up during summer school? Because these are offerings for the regular school year. I'm saying for the regular school year, why can't we let students have, bring in, have classes from community college?
These are completely different. So the course catalog is related to the courses that we offer on our campus and/or the courses that we relate to. We do not, and would not include a course catalog from IVC as courses that we're bringing forward for approval. So that's a separate conversation. That's around concurrent enrollment and, you know, the board policy and around concurrent enrollment. That would be a completely separate conversation, a topic, because it's unrelated to summer, it's unrelated to course of catalog. That's, that's a completely different topic that would need to be done in a board policy workshop.
But it's related to summer because kids could do it for summer school.
We have a, we have a policy in place. It's about the policy.
The con, the concept of doing it does not apply to this agenda topic.
Right.
Have to come up as a separate topic of whether we wanted to pursue that. Well, I thought it did from the standpoint of students feeling that they might not be well-prepared for STEM, STEM careers if they, the, they didn't get an honors integrated too. That then maybe they could take a class at the community college that would prepare them.
That's true, but what we're discussing now is the course of study we offer at Thurston and at the high school.
Right. I, I'm happy to have this conversation when we notice it to have it. I'm happy to have it in a policy workshop and we could talk about concurrent. I know that we've, I've had conversation with it a lot. So, but we, we have to move on on this topic because it's not based on this, in this topic. So, so we need to actually have it where we'd notice the public. And Johanna just raised her hand. Member Perry, if you're good, then she can ask a question. I always come back to you. Johanna, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want to maybe add to this off-topicness, but I just wanted to maybe quickly say, I, I have taken an outside IVC class and I know that they are there and it's not like, this isn't technically related to what we're talking about. So I just wanted to say, if someone does have more interest, like they are totally welcome to take them. It is just something that you have to pursue on your own. So I just wanted to say that, that they are there. It's just not something that's related to this necessarily.
Thank you. And we'd love for you to join in when this is on the agenda. So I'd love to get that feedback from you. We all would.
Well, set the agenda.
I could just add just a couple of clarifying point, pieces of information. We do, we do, I just want to clarify with all the comments of, we do honor all any CCA course that, that's part of our MOU. We honor whether that's, that's an honors for them, we accept that. So that means we have right now 12 CTE classes that have honors designated. And we do have five classes, a big part thanks to Kelly Shear. Now, this year, that are articulated, kids get articulated credits. So they're getting college credit for five of our CTE classes. She's helped facilitate that. And that's, that's separate from the non-CTE course that we do through doing enrollment with IVC. So just want to clarify that, that is where things are. And, and it does change because CCA might add a course separate of us. And then after they add it, we have to go back and add it for our kids. So it is, does fluctuate a little bit, sometimes even during the school year.
Dr. Mayberry, I, I did not realize because I couldn't hear Jim properly, but Jim did call to move the agenda forward. I think he called a question, I'm not sure. And so it needs a two-thirds vote. So we need to take a quick vote procedurally and then depending on where we end up, we'd like more information, Dr. Mayberry. So was it a motion to call a question? Was that?
Dr. Kelly, I heard you say you moved.
Don't like her. Okay. Okay. So.
So you're, you're moving the agenda? Because there's a difference. Okay, so we need, we need a second and we need a two-thirds vote on it.
Second? And maybe you want to do a roll call to do, get the two-thirds?
Yes.
Or see if there is a two-thirds. Okay.
Yep, I'll do a roll call.
Okay, okay. And do students participate in that, this as well?
No, because they're provisional. This needs a two-thirds vote of the board.
Okay, okay. Thank you for explaining.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
No. I want to hear Dr. Mayberry.
Okay, so now we vote on the agenda item. Now you vote on the agenda item.
Yes. Okay, and can you start with the students? And let me just remind everybody, so we're voting on the course study for Laguna Beach Unified School District Secondary Schools for the 2021, 2022 school year. Can you do the roll call and begin with the student board members? Victoria?
Yes, my system just went crazy. Okay, member, member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
No.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries four, one.
Yes, and I'm sorry, Johanna.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, so we're moving forward to 10C. And Dr. Mayberry, if you could put any of those comments, like we could get them in an update. So we're moving to 10C. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the MOU between Laguna Beach Unified School District, Capistrano Unified School District and Coronado Unified School District for the 2021, 2022 school year to establish to participate in the strengthening career and technical education of the 21st century act. Perkins Five.
There are no hands at this time.
Okay, since there are no comments, thank you, Mr. Collin. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. So we bring this MOU forward to the board to this, which is to establish a consortium between Capistrano Unified, Coronado Unified, and Laguna Beach Unified to participate in the next round of Perkins grant funding. Previously, we had a consortium with us and Capistrano Unified. Coronado Unified, a similar district as Laguna Beach, was looking to join a consortium. California Department of Ed reached out to Patty Romo to see if she, if we were willing to have them join our consortium. And so, and we are. And so this MOU is to establish that partnership between the three districts. There's no impact to our funding or anything we've done previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any board questions? Not, may I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Number Osborne, or Clerk Osborne and Member Vickers? Is there any discussion? Or I'm lucky to see if there's any hands raised. Okay, it looks like there's no discussion. Victoria, can you? Sorry, I've lost my place on here. Can you do, conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries five, zero. Moving to 10B. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak to the approval of the mentor? The MOU between Laguna Beach Unified School District, Capistrano Unified School District, Coronado Unified District for, for the 2021, 2022 school year? Oh, did I just read the same thing?
Yeah.
Wow, so sorry.
The MOU between Laguna and College and Career Advantage.
Thank you. So we're moving to 10E. But to participate, I know that's, oh. I am missing, okay, so approval for, let me go to the actual board doc. I found it there, sorry. So between Laguna Beach Unified School District and College and Career Advantage for the California Career Tech Education Initiative Grant Program. I'm sorry, Mr. Collin, that was a question of whether there's any public comment to that.
There are no hands at this time.
Thank you. With that, is there any questions on D? See any hands raised? Okay. So can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Victoria, can you do a, conduct a board member roll call, beginning with student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. The motion carries five, zero. And this moves us to 10E. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak to the approval of the 2020, 2021 school plans for student achievement for each school in Laguna Beach Unified School District?
There's no one at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. Since there are no comments, Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Each year we bring the, for the school plans for student achievement or the SIPSAs, as we call them. The plans are collaboratively developed with stakeholders at each school in alignment with our district outcap or district plan. All of them have recently been approved by their local school site councils. They include goals and actions, some of which you heard from Dr. Hatchell this morning around her MTSS, right? And social emotional wellness. And we are bringing it forward today for your review and approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not seeing hands. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, Member Perry? Are there any discussion? See any hands up? Okay, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries five, zero. That moves us to 10F. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the update to the district triennial plan for providing educational services for expelled students in alignment with County White, the County White Plan?
There's no one at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. Since there are no comments, Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
You again. So since, since, just a little background, since 1997, the California ed code has required each county superintendent to develop a three-year plan for providing educational services to all expelled students in that county in conjunction with all the school, school districts in the county. So our previous plan was approved in 2018. Our school districts in Orange County have developed all fairly similar plans in conjunction with the Orange County Department of Ed. These plans include some preventative activities that schools put into place related to expulsions, as well as the educational services provided by OCD's Access for, which is a program for expelled students. So we bring this forward for your approval and review. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. For Dr. Mayberry? May I have a motion then?
Move approval?
Second.
That was Member Vickers and Member Perry. Is there any discussion? Okay. Thank you for bringing this forward. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student, or student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries five, zero. This moves us to, forward to 10G. Redefine an agreement with Project Voice to provide virtual poetry performances and workshops, not exceed the amount of $16,000. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing? Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak to this item?
There's no one at this time.
Thank you so much. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. Project Voice was introduced last year. Laguna Beach High School, and it was well received by students. It was funded by high school site funds. So this year, our creative writing teacher, Dawn Honeycutt, applied for and was awarded the school power grant to fund the program. This, this was actually held last month. Project Voice has offers those live performances of poetry, followed by some hands-on workshops for students. So we're bringing this forward for your approval. Thank you.
Are there any questions or clarification? Not, can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Remember, thank you, Member Perry. Any discussion on this?
Well, we just heard from Ms. Honeycutt last year about how impactful this program was, so I'm really glad that it's coming back.
So am I. I'm glad. I hope it keeps coming back.
I just want to say on behalf of students, thank you to the school for funding this. I think is, I, I've enjoyed it, and it was fun to go and hear them early morning, I believe, sometime two weeks ago, I believe. Is, I think everyone enjoyed it.
Thank you. Any other hands? Danny, okay. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student provisional? Vote, please.
Johanna?
Yes.
Remember Vickers?
Yes.
Remember Kelly?
Yes.
Remember Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne? President Normandin?
Yes, so the motion carries five zero. This moves us to 13A. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the report on Summer Learning Program 2021?
There's no one with a hand raise at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. Since there are no comments, Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours for this information item.
Yeah. We'll put a, a short, a few slides up here, and here in a second, but tonight, we're providing information to the board as we have usually around this time each year regarding our current plans for upcoming summer school. Our goal is to work towards readiness for next school year. Summer learning and school are really an important part of that readiness for our students, and especially considering our current situation that we've been in. So we're very conscientious of what it might look like for the summer. And so if you look at the next slide, this shares kind of our core summer programs, which is very similar to what we had last year. So kids that are entering grades one, our current kinder through second grades, but our current kids will be entering grades of one through three. We've had a focus around literacy and English language development for English learners. Grades four through eight, literacy, the ELD support, and then also math as well. And then at the high school level, we've had credit recovery classes to help meet the graduation requirement. So a very similar to what we did last year. Then we also have our extended year program for students that are in special education, as specified by their IP, and that is pre-K all the way up through 12th grade. You go to the next slide. So this, these are additional programs that we're looking at. Some new, some new this year, some not. The dual enrollment courses on there. We're going to be able to offer each semester as well as summer. This one with IBC, around social psychology. We also have an ELD, or English Language Development Academic Program that will be offered in the upper, those are all for the high school. And then what we're in, ones that are in development right now, we did a thought exchange a little while back, and we'll be circling back out with parents and kids and teachers again. But these are for grades one through 12, and these are offerings that may fall inside or outside of that regular core summer program. These are specialized content, often related to academics, and I think we may have heard this throughout the year. This might be like a boot camp for algebra, or sometimes in the past, we've called them like a bridge class. They're also, we've also looked at different ways to have kids to do online programs during the summer that are available, where they may be able to check in with the teacher. And then also, along with that, we're looking at some different ways to go about some social supports or semi-structured social opportunities to continue to try to get kids ready and healthy for the start of next school year. So the last slide here is the sessions, kind of the timing of that, what that would look like. So grades one through eight, we've traditionally, it's always been about 20 days. Last year, we kind of broke it up into 20 days, or kids could do two, two-week sessions, or one, two-week session, really trying to get the students there in any form that we can. So if there's different ways that we can go on campus to help, if it's just 10 days, we want to get them there for 10 days, if that's possible. That is almost like a, what we would call a jumpstart program. So it doesn't start right after school gets out. The first day of that one would be Monday, July 12. It gives kids a little bit of a break after the end of the school year, and then starts getting going about halfway through July and goes a little bit into August. Grades nine through 12 is the credit recovery, and so that one is one that we do start right if the school year gets going. If some kids need those credits right away to get ready for next year or even graduation. And then again, special education, extended school year, that program, that will align with the corresponding core program that's listed above. So with the preschool to eighth grade one being starting July 12, and then the high school one starting earlier with the credit recovery program. So those are the general timelines for the core program, and then we have several others that were kind of in development around where kids may be invited, invited to do a, you know, to boot camp, or that they may choose to go to or not. But again, with the ultimate goal of giving kids multiple different opportunities to be prepared for next year and their readiness. Are there any questions for the board or the audience?
Chad?
Yes.
I know in some years for students that were selected or encouraged to come to a summer program, we often had difficulty getting them to come because we couldn't. And I'm just wondering, as the teachers gather the year-end data, and they see students they feel had more learning gaps, is there anything that we can do to make a stronger effort to bring those students in to, to fill those gaps?
I mean, our first, our first and probably most valuable connection with the kids is their teacher, right? And their teacher reaching directly out to them, which they do, and they're doing, they're actually doing this week, and will continue to do it for the next couple of weeks. That has been our strongest advocate for kids, when they have that personal connection of someone who's worked with them all year long. We've also had times where the principals have made those phone calls, but we also, we also recognize that, you know, summer learning or summer interventions, not for all kids or families. And so that's the balance of what, for us, always trying to find out what we can offer during school, what we can offer during summer, and maybe what we need to, you know, offer in the fall of next year.
Thank you.
And Dr. Dr. Mary Berry, can you speak to, so just the people listening have an understanding of how readiness is determined? Because I know there's a lot, a lot of concern over learning gaps this year, right, and other concerns, can you just speak to how that works?
Yeah, so we will, we will reach, we have several metrics that we use. I think some we shared in the mid-year report. But we also reach out directly to teachers, right, especially in this year, where the teachers have had this, you know, the trimester model of have an extra connection and knowledge and relationship with students that they may not have had when they, we had six classes at a time. And so that's a special, important role on readiness, so the teachers know them really well. Along with the metrics that we have, whether it's a standardized test, especially at the elementary level, we have multiple standardized tests that we give to the kids throughout the year, where we look at growth, and then you also have some that are done at the end of the year, at least at the elementary level, or at the end of the, if it's a trimester model, it would be at the end of the course that we would take a look at. And those are done through the schools. You, you heard Dr. Hatchell talk about her MTSS team, right? So they will look at that as well. They look at those patterns throughout the year. Because some of those kids were, well, a lot of those kids were well aware of providing interventions now, because they may see growth. We feel like they're at grade level, and they're ready for next year. And we have some kids where we're providing intervention, where we feel like this is, they're going to need more if you want, even want to continue it into the summer.
Okay, and I did, I did get feedback that the break in the 1010 was really appreciated by parents. Because they could fit some last, right, they could fit some of that in or make some of that work. So it's the fact that you guys are being so flexible in that way, really appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from members? Information item? Oh, both hands. Clerk Osborne?
President Norman, my question, Dr. Mayberry, is would this year represent a shift to where families are really just aware of the offerings and able to opt in to these, maybe some of these more intensive boot camp formats that are outside of the core? Because that's, I've been hearing a lot about that. Now, whether they actually do opt in, that's yet to be determined. My question really is, is it, is it going to be open access? Anybody can come, hey, if you want to come, or your kid wants to come, and they want to do more math, you know, before the school starts again, you know, go for it. And, you know, obviously, we need to drive our invitations, our people that we're really trying to get to take that, you know, take that bait to come. But that's my question. Are we going to shift how we market this, this year in the pandemic year?
Well, we, we want to make database recommendations, right, and then expand from there. So we do have, I really, we're really looking at it as almost like two or three different components of summer school. So you have what we've traditionally had, which is a very targeted intervention for students, right? That is by invite only, very specific skills we want to work on. But then what you described is another component of where it is open access. And we do want to offer, whether it's an algebra class, or whether it's a reading and writing support, but those kind of readiness pieces that maybe are good in any year, but especially, especially valuable for this year, considering all the different factors that have impacted student learning this year.
Yeah, okay. So I, when my, I saw the dates on Core, but do you feel like that, that style might take place over those same weeks, like at the end of summer, leading right up to the start?
We were anticipating, and again, this is, we have to match up, you know, what families are interested in, what, when teachers are available. There's a lot of matching up that has to happen over the next two months as we go for that. We're expecting that those, sorry, those boot camps, or those, you know, or whatever, you know, bridge class, that might be three days long, or it might be five days for half-days. Those will be closer to the start of the year. Those will be almost part of that, what we have at K8 level, where it's like, we call them sometimes jumpstart classes.
Yeah, and your research and your reading is, do you typically see more gains in the beginning of the school year? Like, from all of the research that I've seen, it seems that students make bigger gains in the fall than they do in the spring. You know, learning goes like this and kind of levels out. Is that your experience, you believe as well?
Yeah, there's, there's definitely a well-researched, you know, around the summer break, right? Like, I mean, we, we all know, like, taking 10 weeks or 11 weeks off of school, and the summer is not ideal for learning, right? That wasn't, when that summer break was made 100 years ago for schools, it wasn't around the focus of learning. It was on a very different purpose. So there is definitely that drop for kids that are not necessarily learning in the summer. And then you will see those bigger gains in the fall. And, and then that does tend to level out. So you, as you described, that is pretty consistent for what I've seen as well.
All right, all right. Thank you. Go ahead, Dee.
Hey, um, thank you, Dr. Mayberry. I, I thought before we had talked about, because of the pandemic and so much individual socialized isolation, that we might offer some enrichment classes so students could come back and be together, especially like middle and high school students that have kind of been without it for the year. And I know, you know, like other districts are doing boot camps, but they're a little bit different, like they're doing middle school boot camp for two weeks in robotics, or two weeks in engineering, or something like that. Is there any possibility for us to have some, something at the high school or middle school that's truly enrichment, but will help socially and emotionally, but isn't necessarily somebody who has to build on their basic skills?
Yeah, I mean, those are, those are all, I mean, those are all the things we're open to, as we want kids to feel confident for the start of the school year next year, and feel like they're ready and in a good place. So there are social emotional ones. We're also looking at, you know, some programs that we can partner with the Boys and Girls Club. So there's a, there's a range of those ones that we are looking at to see where it best fits, where we can get kids to, where they, they want to be there, right? And then again, as we said earlier, like, recognize that, you know, not all kids are going to want to show up at our, back on our campuses, you know, in early July, right? But our goal is to have these all be on campuses, so they are there with other students, which is a big part of the social emotional piece that you're describing.
Thank you. Good.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, I don't see any. So we're going to move forward to 14A, but before we do, I thought we could take a quick 10-minute break, so into the restroom and stretch, which brings us back at nine o'clock. So don't forget to mute and turn off your videos, so you have a nine. Welcome back.
Everyone back?
Not yet. I'm back.
Almost.
Waiting on Member Kelly and Member Perry. Let me go look at, yep. And there's Member Kelly. Okay, I'm just looking, sorry. There's Member Perry. Yeah, okay, we are all back. Can I just start, Victoria?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Review theme the media at 9:01 PM. And our next item is information item, Superintendent. Mr. Cohen, is there anyone wishing to speak on the report on summer learning program in 2021?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Dr. Valori, the floor is yours.
We're doing 14A, right?
Yeah.
Right, we did summer learning already.
I thought so, but then I have it twice. I have it as 13A and 14A as I came, sorry.
Do we want to circle back, see if there's any public comments on 14A before I?
Yeah, thank you.
And there are no hands at this time.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Well, we spent a lot of time going through our board policies at the March 1st Board Policy Bylaw Workshop. And we're bringing them back for first read. We have two separate groups tonight, 14A and then 14B. And B has a couple that were requested to be pulled separately for discussion. So we figured it would be easier to put those three separately. We did make the edits, as you can see, noted in the right-hand column, where there was a request to add language. We did, made those edits, made those changes. And so we present them tonight for first read and for, to be moved for second read. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for any members?
I have no.
I don't see it.
Comfortable with what we move forward as first read.
Okay, I see no hands. I do want to make a comment. There's some things that I needed to get to, Victoria, that I have not because of my system being down. So I will get those before they come back again on these items, but they were just the legal reference comments. Okay, so then we can move to 14B. This is this is the first grade review discussion of board policies, 5141.21. Administering medication and monitoring health conditions, 5141.5. Mental health and 5141.52 suicide prevention. Mr. Cohen, is there anyone speaking, wishing to speak on these tonight?
Yes, we have one hand up at this time, and Sherry Morgan, it's your time to speak.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to more address just the idea of the bylaws, because I think Dr. Valori just made a mention that on May, or March 1st, there was a workshop that all of these bylaws were discussed and worked through. But if it's a workshop, that means it's, it was listed as a special meeting. And a special meeting in a board format has Brown Act procedures, it has, you don't allow people to ask questions because they can't. So it's, I mean, it's not, you don't allow it, just if it's a board meeting, people can't ask questions after. But if it's a workshop, then people should be able to ask questions. And it should be an open forum, and it certainly should be something that more of the community would be made aware of earlier than the day before. So I think it's important to understand, was that a workshop? Because if it was, the public did not know that it was a workshop and questions were not allowed to be answered. If it was a board meeting, then you're certainly following proper policy and procedure. So I think there's a little concern here, because if it was a workshop, I know I had a lot of questions on first that weren't, that I wasn't able to ask because it was presented as though it was a board meeting. Thank you.
We are discussing the fact of our board meeting that we had, it's a special meeting, which is a workshop, and that is the correct terms for it, and we did hold it properly. So are there any more comments or questions, Mr. Cohen, or public comments, sorry, for this evening?
There are no more hands at this time.
Thank you so much. Dr. Valori, the floor is yours.
Get myself off mute here, sorry, going back between screens. Again, so these were the three that were requested to be brought back. 5141.21 is specific to, to options that the board has the option to determine which route they wish to go. One was related to parents being able to dispense medicinal marijuana to their student while on campus. Option two was to have the student then check instead would be checked out by the parent. The student would then receive their medication from their parent and then be brought back onto campus. 5141.5 was specific to mental health. And 5141.52 was specific to suicide prevention. And there were some edits that were requested to be made and staffed me those edits. So happy to break them apart separately or take them all as one. But just wanted to, we thought these ones were specific to break apart specifically, because there was lots of discussion about these three.
Thank you. Under the mental health one, I know Jim's having connectivity issues. He had asked me to mention under the fourth paragraph and the first sentence, he'd like to add emotional, social, and sexual development, so to add the word sexual in that space there. And that is policy, let me find, policy 5141.5. And I don't know if we need, does anyone need Victoria to pull it up on the screen? Is everybody okay looking at their own?
I'm fine looking at it on, on my own. President Norman, and I think, I don't know if Jim is still listening too, but I did, since we are reviewing these, wanted him to know that there is mention of other at-risk groups in this policy that were actually there before. And we didn't, we didn't get to finish on that part. But I had noted that those policies, I think, addressed some of his, or some of the language on the at-risk groups, address some of his concerns as well, with them being more at risk for mental health issues. So I just, I think he still can hear, so I just wanted him to know that.
Okay, we could see Jim, he goes, just put your thumb up. Okay.
Okay, there you go. Okay, good. I don't know which paragraph it's in, let me tell him, though, I think.
We all okay with making that change on this? Thumbs up or just verbal yes?
I'm fine with that.
I'm good with it. Okay. Okay, Victoria, if you can make that, make that change.
Yes.
Okay, on the, now we need the option on 5141.21. In the workshop, there were three of us that said that, I think that was option one, sorry, and I'm looking again. Yeah, that we're option one, that we're fine with option one, but then we wanted to bring it forward showing options. So I don't know if anything has changed. There wasn't any public comments in reference to it?
Yeah, I think I had asked to bring that forward just because of the, the community interest in measure KK back about four years ago regarding, you know, medical marijuana, marijuana dispensaries. The topic of marijuana, just in general, seemed to have a lot of public interest, but it appears that maybe that interest isn't there, or maybe it's in a different area. President Norman, you had mentioned before that this is oftentimes used as a treatment for epilepsy. I didn't know if you could expand on that, or if you had any more details on that, because I'm not familiar with that piece of it.
The, I don't know if there, if we have anyone that should, can officially speak to it. Member Kelly can, but it is.
At the special meeting, I had commented that that's what, some cases I had read about, that that was the situation with the child, where the, and the parent was having to remove them from the school site and drive away and then come back and interrupt instructional day.
I see, okay.
There are other, there are other reasons it's used, I just. It's got to be prescribed, right? And so it's the instructional day that, that we had the concern about. And the fact that it would be somewhere private and not open, right, would be different. And it still has to be administered by the parent because of the federal state, how that's disjointed in the law. I certainly would not ask our nurse to do that, or, you know, we couldn't, wouldn't, yeah. So are we good with option one or option two? I don't know if there's, if someone would like to make a suggestion here. Looking. Okay, well, then I'll move that we move forward with option one. Oh, it's not, I can't, it's, do I need to wait for action item to do this, Dr. Valori or Victoria?
We need to bring, we need to know what we're bringing back for second read. So it's, it's just, you know, provide any feedback. And if there's consensus, we'll bring it back with that option. And obviously, then at that point, the board would vote.
I agree.
I just want to make sure we didn't have a motion, I didn't have to ask for a motion for it. I'm just looking to see if there's agreement, okay.
So you're suggesting option one, is that what I heard?
I'm suggesting option one.
And I, and there's consensus there, because I think I was the one that still had concerns on it. And if the public doesn't have concerns on it, and we're protecting the student instructional day, and it's not administered by any of our district staff, and I have no further concerns with it, especially in light of what Jan had mentioned, so I'm good with that.
Option, Member Perry? Pretty good with option one, okay. And then Jim was good with option one in the workshop. So if you get, if you could bring back option one? Thumbs up. Okay, so that leaves us with suicide prevention. Policy.
We took out this, there was, you know, at one point, the strategies were specific to grade six through 12. There was, that was one of the errors in that the law was changed from December to January. So we took out six to 12. So that was one of the, I know, big topics of conversation. And the other was the request at the very end that the board shall review and update as necessary this policy at least every three years instead of five years.
Jason, there's still one reference to 612. Number one, staff development still has a 612 at the end in parentheses.
Yeah, that should be, we got it up above, we got it there, and then we.
That's just, I think, because it's a secondary grades, which are the.
Correct. No, you're correct. That should have been, we cut it up above, but not in that section, so that will be fixed, so.
Oh, so would you take out secondary grades as well, and just say that it will be accompanied by measure of. Okay. Nice catch, Member Pickers. Anything else, any other comment on the three of these before they come back? And so the public understands, everybody understands, there's the workshop, there's this first read, and then we take action on the third step at any time. The board has the discretion to be able to say we want more reads or even to skip the second read. We have leeway on either one of those depending on needs. So is there any additional comments? Before we bring it back for action? It looks like none, okay.
Oh, Carol, sorry, sorry, President Norman. I just, it's a paragraph that I was mentioning on strategies that especially specifically address the needs of students, students that are at high risk. And that is students with disabilities, mental illness, substance use disorders, homelessness, students in out of care settings like foster care, students who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or questioning. That, that paragraph is in this policy in suicide prevention, meaning that we tailor our policies and our strategies. Sorry, we tailor our measures and strategies, because we know that those, those groups of students are specifically higher risks. So I, I had mentioned that. I, I had mentioned that in comment to Dr. Kelly before is in the mental health policy, but it's actually in the suicide prevention policy. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, I think that's important that it's in there. And I think it's important that we address it earlier in the mental health policy as well. I'm looking at the, I think he's in a, he's not looking at us. I'm assuming member Kelly's all good, or are you still reading? God, I don't know if he froze. He might have frozen on us. Okay, he can make comment.
I think is it no, can you hear me?
They can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I, I think it should also be in the mental health policy. Great. That's great. I'll just leave my video off.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. That's what I was wondering, Dr. Kelly, as I was thinking through your comment from the workshop. You know, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Keller, if some of these measures and strategies can be adjusted or specifically address these risk groups just in mental health in general. I mean, we know the research is there that we have higher rates of suicide in these groups, but that's really a question for the board if anybody thinks this language should actually be in both because the data is so strong.
I think it should be about, because I also liked the fact that when we have the same data, right, and we're throughout our board policies, we did the data, same, same identified groups, right, and across our policies, I think it's important. We can send that back to Dr. Vore and Victoria to bring back in the next reading so that it's the same language. I'm just looking to see if Dr. Vore is following where we are.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll bring it so that the same, so we have the same language in both policies. For identifying the, the risk groups, the groups at greater risk.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? See, you're hearing me. Okay, so this is going to move us to fifteen A. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of resolution number twenty one dash oh six appointment of authorized representatives at US Bank?
There are no hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colin. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the next two items are very similar in nature. They have to do with a change in personnel, namely being Dr. Winston leaving and Mr. Conglin taking the role of Assistant Superhuman Resources. The first one is US Bank, which manages our Community Facilities District Fund, CFD. It's the debt service and management payments to DTA formerly known as David Tossig and Associates. It's outside of our general fund. It's no cost to us, but it's where that money is, is controlled and managed.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item? Don't see any hands. They have a motion to approve resolution number twenty one dash oh six appointment of authorized representatives, US Bank.
Move approval.
Number Vickers?
Second.
Clerk Osborne. Any discussion? Do these signatures change at any other time than just from employment changes? Is that really the?
No. These are just required when you have personnel changes and they need the specimen signature, which is why you see that on there.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I don't see anyone else in discussion. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes, through resolution number twenty one dash oh six appointment of authorized representatives of the US Bank, carries five zero. We're moving forward to fifteen B. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of resolution number twenty one oh seven authorization of signatures at Wells Fargo?
There is no one at this time.
Okay. I'm sure it gets good, the floor is yours.
Thank you again. Very similar to the last one, except this has to do with our Wells Fargo account, which is where we maintain our revolving cash as well as our cafeteria fund, but revolving cash being the biggest one. And because of the change in personnel, we need to update the signatures with Wells Fargo.
Okay, are there any questions or questions? Okay, may I have a motion? Okay. Victoria, do I have to read since the resolution? Do I need to read out the resolution?
No, you're fine on the signature one.
Okay, awesome. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Perry. Okay, any discussion? Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes, the motion carries five zero. We're moving to fifteen C. Approval of positive certification of second interim report twenty 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 one. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Sorry, there was no one at this time.
Okay, well then, thank you so much. And Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So it's that time of year where we've made one second interim budget adjustments. I will just say that compared to first interim, and that's where the, the changes are, are based on, the net change is a positive about $60,000. So it's very minor. However, in this presentation, I will go over kind of the summary, what the revenue changes are, as well as the expenditures, and then we'll look at the ending fund balance. And what I thought would be nice for the school board to see this is a different look at our multi-year projections, where normally we just looked at revenues over expenditures, where I'm going to give a picture this time of our fund balance. Because Dr. Valoria had mentioned in his report, the financial planning that led us up to this point for the response to COVID-19 pandemic. I want to point out that potential one-time dollars that we've maintained in our general fund and what we have going forward. So we're going to highlight that later. And then a recommendation to approve the positive certification at the very end. So in terms of our revenues, we saw a slight increase from what we had projected at first interim in our property tax receipts that we got in December. So those increased about almost $81,000 beyond what we thought. So we'll know for sure at our second large property tax receipt in April, but right now it looks like it's tracking higher, which is the adjustment that was made. Federal revenue sources increased slightly, and those are just based on the grants we receive. We don't budget for grants unless we have source documents or the actual grant money in hand. So that's why you see that change there. We have other state revenues that decreased mostly due to deferring strong workforce program grant money that was coming in this year to next year. And then other local sources increased. There was a rebate or refund essentially from the Calsters that we had overpaid last year. They do their audit every year and a true-up in the following fiscal year. As far as expenditures go, we had certificated salaries increase primarily due to additional six best assignments. We had classified salaries decreased slightly, mostly to do for substitute support. And then when you look at the totality of those, the salary changes, that's why there's a change in the benefits, a slight increase of about 15,000. Services increased mostly due to our routine restricted maintenance, and that has to do with all the maintenance that we've been doing for the additional supplies related to our pandemic response. Capital outlay decreased because a lot of those costs were shifted to routine restricted maintenance as well as delayed for the summer. As we look to just finish the year and take advantage of time when we don't have students at all of our sites. And then there were no changes to our transfers. Everything you saw first interim is the same as second interim. So looking at the components of ending fund balance, our revolving cash is the same as 50,000. Routine restricted maintenance reserve is, again, that's based on board policy. We maintain it in our fund balance, four percent of total expenditures for the year. We have assigned potential one-time expenditures. That's really for board goals, and that is one of the flexible areas that we'll talk about in multi-year. And then we have our unassigned reserve, which is the five percent reserve requirement that we maintain in fund balance. That's the three percent minimum required by the state and the two percent addition per board policy. So looking at our multi-year projections, this is what I thought would be really important to point out is when you look at our ending fund balance, which is based on two categories that we can't control necessarily. We can slightly, when you look at a routine restricted maintenance reserve, but you have the maintenance reserve, which is four percent of total expenditures, and then you have the reserve for economic uncertainties. Those are the, the first and third rows in the, the slide you see before you. The one thing that we can control in our fund balance is our assigned potential one-time, and that's board goals. And that includes when you look at the components of ending fund balance textbooks. More recently, we had COVID-19 response. We had unexpected routine restricted maintenance expenditures or emergency response. Historically, that's sat closer to about $2 million. And one of the big projects that we've used it for in the past is when we had the gas leak at Thurston Middle School. So that's why we have it there is for unforeseen or unexpected expenditures that come out throughout the year. And when we started this year, the adopted budget, we had about 5.7 million in there. And based on what we've had to expend for our COVID-19 so far, you can see that at second interim, it's about 4.6 million now. But it's expected to sustain and actually increase in the multi-year. So there is opportunity as we look to accomplish whatever we need to do going forward, whether it's with and, and I should mention, this is general fund. This is outside of stimulus dollars that we're expected to receive. This is the flexibility that we've been granted and that we position ourselves to react well, to make sure that whatever we need to do for our students, we can do quickly. Because these funds are within our general fund. So when we look at our ending fund balance year over year, current year and the next two years out, you see it increases slightly each year. And what that tells us is that we're able to meet our financial obligations this year and the next two subsequent years. When we look at what a, what a positive certification means, that's exactly what it falls in line with, meaning our financial obligations over the next three years. Just a general reminder, when you have a qualified or staff recommends a qualified certification, that means you may or may not meet your financial obligations in the current year or the next two years. And then a negative means you're unable to meet it in your current year or the next, within the next two years. So with that, I would bring forward a positive certification recommendation for the board to approve, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Do any members have any questions? Can raise your hand. Okay. Any comments? If not, can I have a motion to move forward in a second?
So moved.
Vickers?
Second.
Second.
Jim, give that one to Jim. He came through loud and clear.
I'm now on my iPhone, and I can, I can, I can hear, you can hear me on the iPhone, and I can watch you on the, the map, the, the Chromebook, which I just don't understand what's going on with my Chromebook.
We appreciate that your honesty and, and just sticking out and trying other ways to make it work. So thank you for doing that. Okay, so is there any discussion on this or any comments?
I think that Jeff, you always bring us such a comprehensive report and, and we can follow along the information very clearly. I was looking through the report and I was looking at some of, of the enrollment data. And what I had noticed is that when you look at the, moving the cohorts through, we really have had very little change in enrollment.
Yeah, and thank you, Member Vickers, for pointing that out. We've actually, yeah, we're very stable when we look at enrollment projections. And even our more recent ones with the factors related to the pandemic included, show is still remaining stable. But I, I would like to, and I always, I always forget to do this. The report is comprehensive and extremely detailed and well put together because of two very important people in my office. We have Twee Bui and Raymond Lee, who are exceptional at what they do. So without them, it would be nowhere near where it is.
And thank you for always recognizing them. You, you never fail to do that.
Are there any other comments? On this? Jimmy, I don't know. I'm staring at you. So thank you. Oh.
Well done report.
You are, as you are the tech master there, Jim. Thank you, Jeff, for this report, and you never fail to recognize your staff. We very much appreciate that. And you make the finances just easy to read and easy to get through, and we really appreciate that. And we know part of that is the software you selected. And there's other things in, you know, we're so glad Dr. Valoria, you know, saw that you put you in this role because you really changed the way that we get information, and I appreciate it. A great, good story. Are there any other discussions or comments? We, I have not had, have I had a motion? We did, because Jim got it.
There is a motion.
Yep.
We're ready for the.
Second, yep. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes, motion carries five zero, and this moves us forward to fifteen D. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the K through 12 Strong Workforce Program Round Three sub-agreement between Rancho San Diego Community College and Lake of Beach Unified School District?
There's no one at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is the third round of a sub-agreement for the Strong Workforce Program. It's required that we have a fiscal agent, which in this case is Rancho San Diego Community College District, which provides a, a set of funding for us. In this case, it's about $319,000 that would extend the initial 30-month funding we had for our career counseling coordinator for additional 30 months.
Thank you. Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Number Vickers?
Second.
Thank you, Member Perry. Any discussion? Thank you as always to staff for looking for these opportunities for these grants. We appreciate working with others on them. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board members?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes, motion carries five zero. We're moving to fifteen E. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on approval for award of contract to purchase of auto astroturf from Asphalt Fabric and Engineering Inc. based on the contract number four dash twenty dash zero zero dash zero one three zero A of the state of California multiple awards schedule?
There is no one at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Colin. And Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the next two items have to do with Thurston Modernization Project Base Two. The first one now is the California Multiple Award Schedule Bid Award, which for us means that the state of California already held a competitive bid for the light types of products and services that we will be purchasing with it. Now, the reason we break it off from our bid, that is the next item, is because this has to do with the material, specifically the synthetic turf. is because this has to do with the material, specifically the synthetic turf of the product and installation of it. When you can do it yourself, you save the markup from a general contractor, including it within their bid. So there's potentially and usually savings in the project when you can, you can split it up like this, very similar to what Ryan Zeta has done with a lot of the projects, having the various bid packages, which you'll see on the next item. When you can exclude the amount of products or services within a particular bid type or product type, you tend to save money as a school district. So this would allow us to purchase the turf, the similar turf, we're looking at the same type of turf as the high school stadium, so not using the recycled tire rubber. Perhaps a different tough type and height based on the needs of softball. And then bid out, which is the next item, the rest of the grading and drainage work.
Thank you for that information. Is there any board member who has a question, clarifying question, comment?
Jeff, what's the life expectancy of the turf?
Yes, great question. And I'm, thank you, Dr. Kelly, for asking that because initially synthetic turf only had a warranty between five and seven years. But it had lasted, you know, between eight and 10 years, depending on how well you maintain it. And it's important to maintain it because that's, that could void your warranty if you don't maintain it per the manufacturer's instructions. The synthetic turf at the high school, which was also astroturf, has a 10-year warranty. So I would say at the bare minimum, we can get 10 years out of the turf. And if not, then it would be replaced at no cost to us based on the warranty and us fulfilling our maintenance agreement.
And do our maintenance workers do the maintenance of the turf, or do we have someone that comes in and does it?
At the high school, we do. We, part of the California Multiple Award Schedule includes the equipment required to maintain the turf. And our athletic custodian at the high school has been doing that for us. We have outsourced the disinfecting of the turf that we do every other year, every two years. And that's outside of that, though.
And one last question. Does our athletic staff have any sense of injuries increasing or decreasing with with the synthetic turf as opposed to regular ground?
You know, we previously had synthetic turf at the high school, so I don't know if anyone there had experienced natural turf in that stadium. I have heard that it was very difficult to maintain natural grass there. And when you have hard dirt and less grass, obviously, you're going to increase injury. What we do have underneath the synthetic turf is what is a shock pad, essentially. So it is that particular pad, and we're going to do the same thing at Thurston Middle School, has a 25-year warranty and it's designed to prevent what we call GMAX, which is the equivalent of how much force can be applied to the impact of a head to prevent a concussion. And that's proven to improve the safety of the field as well as the stability.
Thank you.
Jeff, I don't know about any injury data that might have been collected. I mean, I don't even know whether Lance Neal would have paid attention. I just know that when we had natural grass, football got done, we had hard dirt for the, for the rest of the sports, the rest of the year, and.
You know, can we, Jen, can we get a motion? Because I think we're going into discussion here. Okay, second. Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Well, I was just adding to the answer to the question, so it's not discussion. I'm done.
Okay, fair enough.
And just so, one of the things that we did, we have kind of tracked because early on, one of the things that with the field that the high school, we put in the turf was there, it was slippery when it was a little bit wet at times. We recognized there were certain cleats that worked better, but we also understood that part of the reason that this was happening was because they realized with some of the early field turfs, they were losing, they were having students blow out their knees a lot. And that was almost too grippy and that as dudes were pivoting, they were, they were, you know, having ACL tears. This, this actually, you know, though you start seeing a little bit of slippage, it actually is better on the body because you're not, it's not gripping and, you know, having significant knee injuries. So we, again, just things we realized as we installed the turf and we're kind of working through it, it was a little different than, than we, you know, we hadn't played on stuff like that before. But it's a turf that's installed, you know, at top, in top sports teams around. And we've had really good luck with it, I think, at this point, the last couple of years, the as you've gotten kind of used to it and know what, what's the right cleat to wear on and everything else, it's been fantastic.
And I think that when I was around early on for the fundraising for that, you know, for the turf and what it was going to be and way back when, kidding, kidding, kidding. There was comments about the fact there'd be less injury, and I know that the coaches use it as a recruiting tool to the students and to their moms who are worried there'll be less injury. So, but I don't know what the, I don't know what the details were, so, but.
I have another question regarding the just overall design at Thurston of the turf. And Jeff, is there a plan for a track around the outside? And is that an additional type or a different type of turf, or is there a possibility that that could remain a natural organic surface like DG or grass? Could you have the, could you have both? Or is that slated to go to turf too, for like a walking path around it?
Laided to go to turf, so it'd be tan turf. So the entire surface of the field would be multi-sport surface. But to answer your question, you could go with an organic or like a composed granite. But it does create drainage issues with turf over time because the debris will spill over into the turf. And there's only so many pores on the turf that allows water through. So that's why if you can go all turf, it's better to do that.
Okay, and that's the plan right now to do the turf track outline?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, Clerk Osborne, I've thought about like, you know, how do you have enough natural space, right, for for the very awareness of the crisis the earth is in, right? And then how do you have the turf to protect from injury, provide a better playing field, and how do you protect that turf so that it's worth investment?
Yeah, and to Jeff's points, sometimes the two don't play nicely right next to each other. So, but I have seen lots, especially at middle schools, lots of nice walking or perimeter tracks that do stay, especially sometimes maybe for cost or other reasons, they stay in DG or just a slightly less developed path around the field and, you know, they have their pros and cons. They can be very wet and muddy. You know, but they also, you know, break up the turf on turf style, so. All right, thank you, though.
Appreciate it. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, Victoria, can you do a board member role call, beginning with the student members, please?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So motion carries 5-0. This moves us to 15F. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of award contracts for the Thurston Middle School Field and Classroom Modernization Project? Bid Phase 2 in the amount of $2,788,000.
There are no hands at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours. I know you kind of spoke to this before yours.
No, thank you. And Ryan Zeta did a great job putting a lot of detail on this item for the board, but it was what I would consider a very successful bid. We had three general contractors bid the primary bid package five, which you can see how tight the range of the bids is there between 2.7 and 2.9 million. All three are very, were very experienced field general contractors, so we felt good about that. And then the site electrical had two bidders of 52,000 and then 171,000. So between those two, we can support the project with our capital improvement program. It was a competitive bid, and we feel good about those that were responsive and responsible bidders that we can award to, and that's what we're bringing to recommend to the board tonight.
Thank you. Are there any board questions or comments? I do not see any. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
I moved.
Thank, Member Kelly, for a second. Is there any discussion on this item? I don't see. Okay. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member role call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So motion carries 5-0. This is forward to 15G on the agenda. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the 2021 10-year facility master plan update? A dynamic living document that is updated on annual basis and serves as a planning tool to reflect current progress and alternatives from changing conditions and district needs.
There is no at this time.
Thank you. And Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thanks again. I, I would just highlight something that President Norman said, this is a dynamic living document. That's why it's a 10-years, 10-year facilities plan. We presented it last business meeting as an information item. Haven't received any comments, but that's not to say that this document has ever stayed the same year over year. We react as we need to in facilities. We, we've always had a focus on sustainability. But as far as our capital improvement projects go, we really pay attention to our cash flow with our CIP and our FER programs. So with that, we're hoping we get approval tonight, knowing that you're going to see something a little different next year likely.
Are there any questions, my fellow board members?
Yes.
See any?
Yes, yes. Well, yeah, I raised that little hand thing.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. And I don't want to, I don't want to get in trouble or say something at the wrong time, but I just, again, I just wondered when, when can, when can we bring up suggestions for the facilities plan? When's the proper time?
Now, and at the last meeting, what was the information item? It's on the agenda.
Well, I know, but I, I'm not sure if we can bring them up in here, or it has to be in a facilities meeting.
No, you can, you bring it up now. Do you, is it something that we should have a discussion about, or it's just a question?
No, we would have a discussion. That's why I'm asking.
Okay, well, now that we can have, then we can have a motion. Would you like to move the item, Member Perry?
Sure.
Okay.
Move forward the item.
Okay. And do I have a second? Thank you, Member Kels. And so now we have a discussion, so go ahead, Member Perry.
Okay, so what, what I was thinking about with our helping, all of our, all of our sites are looking really good now, and I'm glad we're doing, we're going on to Thurston. And going to look at these, you know, redone new college and career centers. I was wondering if at some point we could redo our college and career center. So it was bigger and had kind of the for CLE furniture, so it could be moved around sometime in the next 10 years.
So the direction to maybe inquire with them to see if they're, if they have a need, because I want to do something if they have no interest or need for it, right?
I did ask. I did ask. But you can ask.
Staff's place to, yeah, that's staff's place to ask. So we, they could definitely ask and look into that. Is there any objection from the board on that?
No, no objection for me. I might ask Mr. Dixon, when, when that part of the building was last remodeled, just for some historical context.
So there was. Dan would know.
I was going to say, or Jan. Let's give it to Jeff, though.
You know, the bond, the 2000 general obligation bond, the district passed, all the sites were modernized, usually between the years of 2004 to 2006.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Dixon.
I, I was told that for our college and career center, they bought furniture like at a garage sale, and they tried to refinish it themselves and, you know, just brought things and put in there. It's not, I don't think it was part of the district doing anything in 2006. Am I wrong?
Well, I don't think he has the answer to that right now. I see him, he's reading, but.
I believe, I'll confirm this, but I believe they got new furniture in 2018, so. But that wouldn't be in the facilities master plan.
Oh, okay, that little college and career center with the two desks and chair, they got new furniture in 2018? Okay, yeah, if you could check on that, that'd be great.
Are there any other comments? Questions?
I just want to say I like the way that Jeff has worded it. It's got a really long description on the agenda. It took you forever to read and, you know, but it's so nice that it is dynamic and living and updated, and we can have conversations about what we might want to see on it. And I, you know, I, I think, you know, we could even, you know, go on and continue to highlight, you know, some of the parts of our, our master plan that are very green or sustainable. So I'm just, I'm really proud that it's a, that it is dynamic and it's not set in stone 10 years out, and that's what we're doing. So I really appreciate that.
And I, I am complete agreement with you, and I think the other members have made comments before, as well as to make sure there's lots of green space. Right, and that we're, that we're keeping that in there, we'll.
Yeah, Jeff has indicated before, he's really working toward that. I mean, that's a lot of progress toward that, but it's, it's also important to note that, that part of it being a document that changes and moves, it, Jeff adjusts it to how we can fund it because he will move things out, put them further out years, and, and that's important so that we don't spend more than we have ready to spend. It's and that we have combined the things with any modernization or new additions with the facility repair and replacement. So it's, it's pretty comprehensive. But I appreciate that it, that it, that he does change it.
Yeah, and that it's responsive, really, to what, what's going on. We just saw that in these last 12 months, so.
Right, and then, and as you mentioned, even in the gas leak of, I know those are earlier funds, but even responding to those things is responsive in all of us, and none of it's really, none of it's set in stone. It's what, what do we need, what do we need today for the students, so. Anything else? I'm looking. Okay, so we're good with passing this as it is, but knowing it's a dynamic living document and with the guidance of looking at the CTE program and making sure we focus on a green space. Was there a word you'd rather use, Clerk Osborne, than than that sustainable space or?
No, it's not, it's not really a space, and I think Jeff already does a really great job with this, but our sustainability practices as a district are already leading. But that's definitely an area that he said that he's going to continue to focus on, so it's not, it's not a space, it's more a strategy. So thank you for clarifying. I don't want to belabor it, but I'll correct the record. Thank you.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to ask, because I was like, any, you know, all the equipment they're using and all the things he's doing to be as green as we could be, so. Okay, so we want to keep focusing on that. So then, Victoria, can I please have, can you please conduct a board member role call, beginning with the student board provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So motion carries 5-0. And it's moving forward to 16A. It's approval, well, Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the amended job description for Assistant Superintendent Himmery Source?
Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the amended job description for Assistant Superintendent Human Resources?
There are no hands at this time.
I have the floors, Mr. Dixon, but it would be to you, Mr. Collins.
Yes. Thank you, President Norman. No worries. So again, at, at the February 11th, 2021 board meeting, there was the approval for the public information officer position. And so with that, this is kind of the final change. It was taking the items of the communications pieces that we had put into the, the PIO job description out of the, the Assistant Supreme Human Resources, Public Communications. So making the position that just the Assistant Superintendent Human Resources. So looking to kind of just finalize that restructuring. So with that, any questions?
Are there any board questions? I'm sorry, I'm moving screens to see if Jim or Jan. Okay. May I have a motion then to approve the amended job description for Assistant Superintendent Human Resources?
Move approval.
Thank you, Member Vickers.
Second.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. Okay, any discussion? Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call? I don't know if the student board members are allowed to vote on this or not. I'm still unclear. I'm sorry, Dr. Valoria. I don't know. Are they allowed to, since this is personnel related?
Yeah, they just wouldn't be able to vote on a on the hiring of, of a person necessarily, but this is simply a job description.
So they can't have the job description part? Okay. Okay. Can you start with the student board member provisional vote, please, Victoria?
Johanna?
Yeah.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries five zero. We're moving forward to 17A. And Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of sales surplus property and equipment?
There are no hands up at this time.
Okay. Thank you so much. And with that, Mr. Morrison, is it still Mr. Morrison presenting? Okay, Mr. Morrison, the floor is yours. And welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Norman and members of the board. I really appreciate you guys considering this item. Last summer, we bought 116 computers for our teachers to use and they were MacBook Airs. In the fall, we noticed several problems with them, deficiencies. One, they weren't working great with Zoom, the camera itself. We saw some overheating issues. They conflicted with the microphone and we had some speed issues with them as well. We reached out to Apple. They said there was no trade up program, but they gave me some names of companies that purchased machines from school districts. And so I reached out to them and found out that the value held up quite well. So, and we have been using them this year. So it's about the, the quotes came in at about 70% threshold purchase price. We would have to go to a formal bid process on this to, to make this happen. But I know that the good news is Apple came out with a new chip that's about 40% faster. So we would, we're kind of recommending that you approve the sale of these machines so that we can use that money to offset the cost of some new equipment for the teachers. And I know the teachers would appreciate you if you approved this item. So, any questions?
Are there any questions, board members?
I had a question, a quick one. Is that a warranty issue? They wouldn't let you trade them up, but overheating and cameras that don't work isn't really a warranty issue.
Yeah, they, they said that it's normal for the, the, some of those things to happen. The camera itself is just a little pixelated. It's just a lower res camera.
Okay.
It's not broken. None of, nothing's really broken. It's, the fan works and it's supposed to do that. It's just that it's loud and it's interfering with Zoom calls and things like that. So we're not getting like, I feel like we're not getting good quality out of them. And I think we could do better for our teachers. So that's kind of why I want to do this. But I don't, I, they weren't willing to take them back, which I was frustrated with, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, that answers my question. Thank you for trying.
Thank you for finding a surplus and wanting to sell it as well. I'm looking to see if there's any other questions or comments. Okay, then I can have a motion to approve the sales surplus.
Wait, wait, just comment. I thought we were just doing questions now.
We're doing questions. So I was asking for, to move to approval for discussion, so we can go to the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I moved. Okay, thank you. Clerk Osborne and Member Perry. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm just for anything that will help the teachers. We all know how frustrating technology can be. And if we can help with that, not having it too loud, so kids can't hear them over Zoom or the camera not work well, I'm all for that. They've, they've gone through a lot.
Anyone else? Change your hands? Victoria, can you conduct a board member roll call? I'm looking, because Jim popped over here. Jim, were you trying to make a comment?
No.
Okay, you, you showed up on my screen, so I was sure if hand went up, then I just missed it. Okay. So Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna? Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries five zero. We're now moving forward to 18A. Action item, Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of candidates for California School Board Association? CSBA 2021 delicate assembly election.
There are no hands at this time.
Thank you. Dr. Flora, the floor is yours. I'm not sure Dr. Kelly can present on this or not.
Actually, I'm going to read it on Dr. Kelly's behalf.
Thank you, Victoria.
So Dr. Kelly has reviewed all of the materials for the nine candidates and he's making the following recommendations. Michelle Barto, Newport Mason Unified School District, Bonnie Castry, Hennington Beach Union High School District, Gina Clayton Tarvin, Oceanview School District, Karen Freeman, Placentia or Linda Unified School District, Diana Hill, Will Salamios Unified School District, Al Jabbar, Anaheim Union High School District, Shirley Metoyer, Newport Mesa Unified School District, Arturo Montez Centralia Elementary School District and Suzie Schwartz Saddleback Valley Unified School District.
Thank you for doing that. Thanks for not making me, you know, slaughter those poor people's names. Are there any questions? Or questions? Okay, get out a motion to approve the candidates for the California School Board Association? Clerk Osborne? Okay, any discussion?
Thank you, Jim.
I just wanted to say that they're, they're an outstanding group of people. I, I was so impressed with their resumes and in fact, I even taught one of them at La Cal State Long Beach many, many years ago.
Oh, that's great. Well, I, I, I trust Jim's judgment on this and I'll, also I know we didn't meet anybody because of COVID. So, you know, you read carefully, you made great choices, I'm sure.
It's, it's a, it's a nice diverse group of newcomers, experienced people, ethnic diversity, geographic diversity, small districts, large districts. And so I think it's, it's I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't do all of them because it was, it was just trying to eliminate three. And I mean, it was easy for one. One turned in the, is his application handwritten and, you know, I, it, it didn't seem like he put very much time into it. And it wasn't that substantive, but the others were very hard to do.
Well, thank you for taking into consideration all those factors.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Thanks, Jim. I don't see any other hands raised.
And we got to it before midnight.
I'm in there to hear about it.
I got a timed agenda for you, Jim. Can we move it for approval?
Yeah, that's what I was.
It's already, it's, yeah, it's already been moved.
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
I was gonna say no, no, to tell Jim I disagree with him just to laugh, but yes, I, I'm so appreciative of him doing this work. So the motion carries five zero. Was moving us forward to 18A. It's, Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval change? The approval change, the date of the previous scheduled June 10th Board of Education meeting?
There's no one at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins. Dr. Valoria, the floor is yours.
Well, this one's pretty straightforward. You know, when we were doing the dates, just one, for some reason, we missed this one and recognized that the June 10th would be the last day of school and, you know, high school graduation. So that might be problematic for us. So we're recommending that we move the June 10th meeting to June 8. And we, we need two meetings in June, simply for budget and L cap approval. So we have the presentation at one meeting and approval at the next. So it's important that we maintain a meeting, that, that extra meeting in June to have two there. So that's the recommendation.
Any questions for Dr. Flora? I see none. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the changes to the change to the date? Member Vickers? Clerk Osborne, thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you.
I don't see any hands up. Thank you, Soren, for that. Okay, so Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So motion carries five zero. This moving us forward to 19A adjournment. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is March 25th, 2021, which is a study session and it's, the focus is on equity in the district for our partner from education elements. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting is April 22nd, 2021. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved?
Member Perry?
Second.
Clerk Osborne? Thank you. Is there any discussion? So as a reminder, by BB 9200, when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated and thus has no individual power until we're seated again. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero and the meeting is adjourned at 10:08 PM. Two hours earlier than Jim predicted.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.